Cathy, do the announcement.
Me?
Dr. Evans Brown, the floor is yours.
Oh, okay, so ordinarily, this would have been the student achievement work session. I'm going to yield some of my time, well, most of my time, to the finance chair, Paulette Woods. But I just want to remind everyone that, um, welcome everyone, I meant to say that first. It's such a beautiful day, but getting back to my school, I think everything we present and work on at our various Board of Education committees should be associated with student achievement, um, student academic achievement. And so accordingly, uh, we have a civil responsibility, um, to ensure that, you know, all kids are inclusive, the environments are inclusive, um, that promotes, um, human rights and treat children with dignity. So many of our children now are socially and economically vulnerable. And you remember John Lewis, um, that congressman who said he liked to get into good trouble? Well, he quote, I'm going to quote him 30 years ago, just about 30 years ago, and he said, quote, "Investing in our youth means that we must invest in educational leaders, including school administrators and teacher leaders and prioritize equity with centered and best practices." If that means reallocation of resources, this is what we must do. The belief is that we want to have the best in class, to teach and have the supports in place with evidence-based practices that will move the needle for academic success for all of our students. So over the years, the last three years, two of those years we've been in COVID, um, it was very daunting. And we looked at two pandemics, actually, COVID-19 and Black Lives Matter with the death of George Floyd. We looked at increased graduation rates, and graduation rates have increased from about, I'm going to say roughly 10 years ago, when I worked on my dissertation, was 47% to now. Um, our graduation rates are close to 80%. We looked at staff development activities to keep staff, teachers in particular, up to par with, um, best practices, assessing where their students are in terms of academics. Um, we looked at minority and women-owned businesses, which we found that a mere 8% to 9% of those women, and, you know, women in particular, have contracts with this district. So we have improvements to be made. We looked at, um, the fact that 20% of our students are in special ed in this district out of roughly 30,000 kids. And being in special ed doesn't mean it's a life sentence. We can move that needle as well, and we probably need to look at who's in special ed right now. We haven't done that in a while. And the concern about continuation of teaching to the test. I remember when I worked in these classes, we were always teaching to the test. So there's the academic gap there. I just don't think that it means much to continue to teach to the test. Why are we doing that? So education should focus on the whole child, an opportunity for learning, as it should be fun. Kids want to be empowered through inquiry, critical thinking, reading and writing, et cetera. I could go on, but I'm going to yield my time to my colleague and as the Vice President of Student Achievement, the Chairwoman of Finance, Board Member Paulette Woods, to continue her lead in the budget conversation, which is related to student achievement. Paulette?
Well, thank you, most gracious Chairwoman, for recognizing our priorities are recognized in our budget, where we put our money. That tells you your priorities. So we have here today our illustrious superintendent, who, this is her budget. She, she prepared it, and she and our super, our Chief Finance Officer will address where the budget priorities are, where the money is. And I yield to, and give the floor to Dr. Tanya Williams, our superintendent.
Thank you so much, Chairwomen, and it is good to see you, Board President Petrucci. It's very good to see you. Um, I want to certainly thank Dr. Evans Brown for extending some time for us to do a deeper dive into the budget this week and to further our discussions. I think it's allowed you a little more time to review some of the budget pieces. It has also given us a little more time to ponder and respond to some of the questions that were presented last week. Um, you know, one of the most important things that a school district can do is to create and have passed a successful budget that prioritizes things like equity of resources, making sure that that is one of the main focuses. Uh, this afternoon, I got some really good news that I'm happy to share. I got a call from Senator Kennedy, and he was very excited because he and our Majority Leader has secured an additional $250,000 that's geared towards transportation. So I was really, really excited about that for us to do some innovative thing. So, um, yes, that's good news. So, um, at this time, I want to turn things over to Mr. Pritchard. I do want to say since last week, we've been very busy. We met with our Buffalo Common Council members earlier this week and discussed the budget. They had some questions. We've also, I believe, today, there was a meeting that Dr. Karestis had with our District Committee of Stakeholders, and I'm sure that this is something that was discussed. And I had the wonderful opportunity to meet with some student stakeholders, and they also had some interest in our budget and how monies will be spent. So with that being said, I'm going to turn things over to our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Pritchard.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, and good evening, Board Members. Um, I'll certainly try to do my best to let you all get out as soon as we can, because it is nice out there. Um, so, Admir, thank you for pulling up the slide. I, I have, um, there is a slide presentation, and this presentation is essentially, it's last week's presentation with a couple more slides added into it. So I'll go through kind of the first half of it, and if there's questions that relate to some of the things we talked about last week, um, you know, we can, we can touch on those other slides, or if you want, I can touch on them anyways. But I just had a few, uh, you know, a few slides here. Um, and then, you know, we wanted to continue the discussion of, you know, Board Member questions and, and things like that, and go over prior questions or things that may still be open in, in the eyes of Board Members. Um, so let's, uh, we'll get at it. Um, Admir, could you please go to page two? All right, thank you. So again, this is, this is really just the, the back half of our, of our timeline. Um, you know, the, the Board's already approved the four-year plan. Um, the, uh, the Board has, had received the draft of the budgets, of the school-based budgets, and then the detailed budget that supports that, primarily the general fund. Um, now, we're in May. Um, so the superintendent proposed budget, we anticipate having sort of that final proposed budget issued to the Board this coming Friday. Um, it would be, uh, we'll send it out via email, but we'll also include it as part of the, of the, of the Board Docs packet that goes out. Um, and it will include the school budget, the, uh, the detailed budget. There'll also be an executive summary. And then along with it, um, I'll notate any changes that we've made from the original draft that you had. So, you know, a few things that we've talked about, um, you know, I know Jim Barnes had mentioned last week that within the general fund, we hadn't done the full reconciliation of general fund positions to the school budget yet. So that's been completed, so there'll be some movement in between different lines. Doesn't change the school budget, but it just, it, it means that the general fund will align with it. Um, we also included in the budget, which was not in the original draft, is a, um, sort of the first year of our modified sports program, um, which we can, we can go over, and I can get you some more information from Mike House in terms of how it's laid out. But, but we're looking really at kind of like a two-year phase-in. Um, and we included the first year at about 1.15 million in, in the, in the budget. That will be in the proposed budget, um, um, for, for your consideration for next week. Um, and we're excited about that as a, as a general fund item. Um, obviously, we've had the, the Finance NOPS last week, another one today. And again, the Board approval we're anticipating for May, May 18th. Um, now, as typically we do, we, we do try to gather as many questions from Board Members as we can. Um, certainly, we'll try to answer them tonight. Um, but we understand there may be some questions that we may not be able to provide an answer to. We'll, we may have to do a little bit of research. Um, so we'll continue to gather questions and prepare written responses. Um, I did send to the Board and Cabinet yesterday sort of the tally of all the questions that we had so far. Um, and, uh, we can go over those in a little bit if there's any questions on there. And then, you know, we're hoping to gather up any questions today, tomorrow, and Friday. And then, um, you know, we should be able to provide full, you know, thoughtful written responses no later than next Tuesday. So hopefully, any question that's outstanding, we, we can, we can address. Um, so that's sort of how the timeline is looking right now. Um, next slide, please. Um, this slide again is just a very brief summary of the overall adopted, now proposed budget for '22, '23 versus the adopted budget for the '21, '22 year that we're in right now. So again, revenue's growing 42 million, 4.5%. Expenditure's growing 47.6 million or 4.9%. We are looking to use some additional fund balance, and that's largely due to a contingency item that we put in the budget to, for the potential settlement of outstanding labor contracts. We're talking teachers, administrators, 409, the Engineers Union. So we've, we've, we've got a number in there based on some estimates we did previously. Um, and, and those are included in there to not, not be surprised if we were to settle a contract that we, we didn't contemplate it as part of the budget. So, um, that's why you're seeing that, that fund balance slight growth in projected fund balance usage. Um, the, the bottom half of this just shows, again, the school-based budget. The simplest summary of the school-based budget I could give you is just looking at, you know, what are, what are the, the staff positions that are in the schools? So from '20, '21, uh, 4,650, '21, '22, for 4,719. And '22, '23's draft budget, 4,891. So it's, it's growth over the last two years, and this includes general fund positions and grant positions, recurring grant positions, and also positions that are funded through American Rescue Plan for the after funding and so forth. So that very, very high level is the budget. Now we're going to go to our first new slide. Um, Admir, if you could advance to page four. Um, page four, I, I'm just trying to give here, uh, and we had a, a revenue chart in the last slide, but we always like to, when we, when we put that executive summary together and have that go out to the Board on Friday, we really like to just kind of emphasize where our revenue sources are. Um, and, and the chart on the left, you can kind of see that 61% of our overall revenues is that state foundation aid. So again, foundation aid is state aid that really drives, that drives the district. That's where, that's where our growth has been, and that's the primary operating revenue that we have. And that's a, that's a big chunk of the pie. Um, and if you look at the very top of the pie, um, at what would be the 12 o'clock, you can, and you, and you go clockwise, um, you'll see that blue chunk is state building aid. So that, that really pays for our debt service, um, that we have incurred on our, on our buildings. Um, so there's a corresponding debt service that relates to that state building aid. Um, other, uh, state other formula aid is in the orange. That's our, um, you know, that's all other types of state aid that are not otherwise outlined here. So that, that includes transportation, CTE-related aid. Um, there's, there's some special ed-related aid in there, textbook, software, hardware. That all goes in there. Um, and then that little gray slice is state charter school-related. So that includes transitional aid and the, um, the supplemental revenue. So those, those, those two, and those do relate, they correlate to the growth in charter schools. So if charter school pupil counts grow, so will that revenue. And then state foundation aid, again, that's our biggest piece. Uh, city property tax at 70.8 million or 7%, that's that light blue one. Um, county sales tax, I have at 47, 48.7 million. Um, all other revenues are at 22 million, and that, that includes things like federal aid, Medicaid, um, any, any billing, um, other, other districts and so forth, and any, any miscellaneous item. And then use of reserves is, is the last part in that kind of dark orange color. Um, so that, that's looking at it, the, the general fund budget, and trying to show you where, where the funding comes from. So primarily, it's state aid, and primarily within state aid, it's foundation aid. On the right-hand side, I have some bar, I have some bar charts. Um, and this is looking at the, those same aid types. But what I have here is showing the growth over a five-year and six-year period in each of these aid types. So, uh, and you'll, you'll really see, there's only one bar that's growing significantly, and that's that state foundation aid. So, um, between 2016, '17 and 2021, '22, it grew a little over $90 million, um, meaning whatever foundation was then, it, it grew 90 million. Um, and then from '21, '22 to next year, it's expected to grow another, um, you know, based on that chart, another 30, uh, little over 30 million. Um, so that's, that's really where the growth in our, um, in our revenues is coming from. Um, and a couple of years ago, it looked like we might start seeing some shrinkage in that area, but obviously, with, with everything that happened at the federal level and the state level, that did not come to pass. And that is still our primary, uh, you know, growth area, as I noticed. It's the biggest component of our revenue and also the biggest component of the growth over the last several years. Um, and if you go down the line, you can kind of see the rest. Building aid has been relatively flat, flat. State other formula aid's actually down, and that's really down because of transportation. The last couple of years, transportation expense has been down. So the revenue's been down in following year. Um, charter school-related aid is up, and that's primarily because we have more charter school pupils and more tuition. Uh, city property tax is unchanged, so it's 70.8 million. Um, but if you, if you look at it over the, over the period that I'm showing here, it, it hadn't, it hasn't changed. Um, county sales tax is up a little bit, other revenues up a little bit. Um, use of reserves is actually down a bit compared to '16, '17. And that's really because '16, '17 was when we settled our, our BTF contract. And in that year, we had put in a fair amount of fund balance to fund that contract in that first year. Um, so we, I, I believe it was, uh, it was probably over 50 million that we had included as use of reserves in that budget as we had settled that contract. Um, so we're, we're down. So that's, again, that, this is just sort of a snapshot of where revenue's looking next year in total. And then again, the, the bar chart shows us the, uh, the main, um, you know, the main growth areas. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so this, this chart is very similar to the last chart, except instead of looking at revenues, I'm looking at expenditures, and I'm looking at it by type of expenditure. Um, so, and again, this is all, this is really just a, a taking that budget that the Board already has, and we're collapsing it down into a handful of numbers and into a couple of charts. So it's all the data that you see, um, you know, in, in the overall budget here. I'm just, I'm trying to just show it in, in, in a, in a pie chart and then a growth chart. So, uh, compensation is obviously our biggest portion of our budget, followed by, well, not necessarily followed, but, but very closely by employee benefits. So that blue and the orange on the pie chart, um, that's salaries and employee benefits. Uh, the gray slice, that's transportation. Um, and that is transportation, our costs of transportation contracts with, uh, per student with, um, NFTA and non-salary items. So salary-related transportation would be part of compensation. So this, this is just looking at our transportation contracts. Um, we also have tuition. Uh, yellow sliced, um, is tuition, primarily agency tuition. So this is tuition that is paid for Buffalo kids that go to some of the various agencies. Um, so they're serviced outside of our schools, and we, we pay, um, we pay tuition to those agencies. Um, next to that is charter school tuition. We all know about that, approaching 155 million in tuition or 15% of our budget. Um, that, that alone is just the tuition. So it doesn't include any other services provided for charter schools, just the tuition. Um, debt service is the green slice. Um, and that, that again is the cost of the debt that is incurred to, um, primarily in the JSCB. Most of our debt that was issued to the City of Buffalo has been paid off. So all the debt that we have remaining is JSCB debt. Um, so 108.7 million, so a little under the amount of, um, building aid that we receive. Um, and, and building aid also covers lease costs. So, um, I'm continuing on that pie chart, getting up towards 10 o'clock on the chart, the contingency. That contingency is that amount that we put in there for the potential settlement of, of outstanding union contracts. Um, retiree health insurance, I have that as its own category in kind of a dark orange. And, uh, you know, the reason I, I don't show that as an employee benefit is because that's a benefit paid to people that are no longer here. Um, so because they're no longer here, um, that really is, it's, it's a legacy cost for our retirees that we, and show as a separate, as a separate category. And then the last category that I have in there is all other expenses. And that literally is, there's a lot in there, um, but it's a relatively small amount. That includes all of our plant, IT, contracts, uh, equipment, things like that, textbooks, um, computers, things like that. All of that rolls in, into there. So that takes our expenditures and really says, what, what do we, what type of things do we spend money on um, in, in this proposed general fund budget? And it's similar, um, not, not, not dissimilar to what you've seen in prior years. Um, but again, it's, it's just nice to, to kind of remind ourselves what's in there. Um, on the right-hand side, again, I do have those bar charts again. Um, and I'm looking at all those same types of expenditures, and I'm showing the growth that we had in those expenditures from 2016, '17 through '21, '22. So basically, five years of growth is what you see in the orange. And then, um, from '21, '22 to '22, '23, that's the current year, the next year growth that we're, that we're showing. Um, and so that next year growth is, is the blue. Um, and where you'll see a lot of it, charter school tuition, that, that's the most of all these categories. That's where, that's where our costs have grown the most over the last six years, has been in, in charter school tuition. And a large portion of that is, is in next year. Again, compared to our original budget this year, we've got three more schools next year, seven schools expanding. Um, tuition rates are a bit higher, so it's a, it's a, it's a higher cost. Um, the contingency line, again, I've explained that already. That's the, that's the potential cost of union contract settlement. And, um, that, that bumps up the amount that we have set aside, and I don't, I don't have it allocated yet because we don't know exactly where it'll be. That's just based on our estimates of, of potential cost for some of these contracts. You'll see the transportation costs going next year are lower in our budget. And we explained this before. We, we're trying to be more, uh, you know, we, we want our projection, our, our budget projection to be more, more in line with what we believe next year ultimately will be. So there is a reduction in the num, in, in the budgeted transportation because we've been budgeting for the last two years for as many bus routes as we had prior to COVID starting, prior to the disruption of our inability to get bus drivers and so forth. Um, so next year, we're really, we're, we're projecting roughly a similar, um, similar number of bus routes as we have now until we, until we can actually find and prove that we're going to have more. You know, we know that transportation and per student, and everyone's working very hard on that. But realistically, um, this may be a challenge that we're going to have for a couple of years and, and that's reflected in, in, in our budget. Um, so, again, just wanted to give you these visuals so you can see at a very high level where, where the dollars are. Um, I'm going to go to the next slide. And this is looking at our budget expenditures, and I, I'm looking at it a couple of different ways. On the left-hand side, um, instead of looking at it by type of expenditure, I'm, I'm showing it by sort of functional category. So, um, it, I'm not looking at whether it's a, a salary or non-salary cost, or equipment or whatever, but what we, what we do is we put it in, into these buckets of spending that the state sets up. Um, so the, the first one in that pie chart, starting at 12 o'clock and going to a little past 3, is regular student instruction. Um, that is basically our normal, uh, you know, our everyday classroom, uh, teachers, uh, classroom costs. Um, it, it also includes CTE multilinguals in there, um, so called regular student instruction. Um, the next category in there, special education, that is, that's our special ed cost. Those are self-contained rooms, con, uh, contracts, other costs, special education. Um, the, the little, the, the gray, uh, slice is our, is our school-based support. So that, that's the, the nursing, psychologists, social workers, um, any of the sort of non-instructional student supports are in there. Um, then you have school administration, which is that yellow pie piece. Um, that's, that's the cost of, of, of our principals, uh, system principals, um, other school clerical staff and so forth. So that's your school administration. Um, next to that, um, on the pie chart, a little past 6 o'clock, um, you'll see general and instructional support. So that is our central office. That is our, um, our curriculum areas, any of our central office administrators, in sort of training. All of those are there, so that's general and instructional support. So a relatively small slice. Um, the green one is facilities and central services. So that is, that's your plant cost, your engineers, your utilities, um, your custodial costs, uh, your IT costs are in there as well, so it's security. So that's facilities and central services. Um, the dark blue, debt service, the orange, transportation. That gray is charter school, and then retiree healthcare, I show that again, is that, um, kind of a, I guess, a brownish color. Um, so that, that looks at the expenditure by function code. And again, it's all the same data, but we, using the accounting structure that the state sets up, um, we can slice it and dice it a little bit differently. Now, on the right-hand side, and, and this is still preliminary, preliminary because we don't have all of the grant data, you know, grant budgets get developed over the coming months and really into the summer. Um, but what I did is I'm actually showing that same data, and you'll see that up in the, uh, towards the top, between 10 o'clock, if you look at a clock face in, in midnight, um, you'll see three pie slices that kind of stick out a little bit. So that's our grant. So just to give you an idea of the size of grants, that, that darker blue, 116.3 million, um, that very dark green, R-PESER, and that's a tentative number because we're still, you know, we have to go through, we have to go and, and examine the, the previously approved, uh, spending, determine, there's going to be certain costs that we thought we were going to spend this fiscal year that are going to get shifted next fiscal year. There's a few things we've already mentioned that we're, that we're likely going to include as amendments in R-PESER programming, some of the security costs, additional nursing costs. Um, so that, that, that piece of the pie is that. And then food service, again, that's another, that, you know, just as much as anything else, that, that supports our schools as well. So that, that, that pie chart with the three that stick out a little bit, really is what I'm trying to do there is just show sort of an, an overall total operating fund, um, spend because the, the school-based budgets have positions that are funded in the general fund, and they have positions that are funded in grants, and positions that are funded in R-PESER. So it gives you an idea, a little bit of... So it gives you an idea, a little bit of the scale of those. And the general fund budget is a little over a billion, so 1 billion, 20 million. If you add in all the operating funds, and all the operating funds, general fund, food service and grant, including R-PESER, we're at 1.267 billion. So that's, that's our annual budget. And obviously, again, the grant numbers are going to change, but that gives you an idea of really the scale of, of, of what we're all about as a school district and where those dollars go. These numbers are not, not hugely different from the prior year. You know, it's not a, there's not a wholesale change from any one to another. A lot, a lot of what we are doing, you know, this next year, we were doing this current year. But again, it's just good to kind of show that and, and we'll explain a little bit more in that executive summary. So sorry to take, you know, kind of a fair amount of time to go over that, but I just, I feel like it's always good to kind of recap a little bit, just the overall budget. I use these charts as a reference guide for me all the time as I'm looking, what, what is it that we're trying to spend? Where does it fit in the pie? Is it, is it growing area that, that we're trying to grow? Does it, does it seem to meet the, you know, the changes in student population and things like that? So that's why I like to, like to have these things. If we can go to the next slide. You know, really at this point, I, I don't know. I, I guess I was going to hold off on going through the rest of the slide because they're, they're, they are verbatim repeats of, of last week's presentation. If there's questions that are relevant to those, I might, I might ask that we have, you know, that we go to one of those slides. But I think at this point, I thought it would, it might make sense to really just have a general discussion, go over questions from the board. Any, if there's any follow-ups on our latest written responses to the outstanding questions that we sent out yesterday or, you know, and again, I, if, if Dr. Williams wanted to say anything else here as well, I'll, I'll kind of defer and then defer to the board for questions.
Okay. So I think, Admir, you can take down the slide if we need to go back to it and go back to it. But I, I just want to thank you, Jeff. I think you've done a remarkable job taking a lot of data and, you know, complex data and presented it in a way that is fairly comprehensive. So I'll turn things over to Chairwoman Woods to see if there are questions.
Okay, the floor is open up to board members. If you have any questions you'd like to ask about your budget. I see Sharon Belton Cotman has her hand raised.
So my question is about equity and what type of equity lens was this budget looked at with? Specifically, I am concerned about how, and then these, these are not new questions. Okay. So I feel like it's a broken record right about now. Okay. How are teacher aides and teacher assistants sign? How is it that, how is, who is making the decision to put large numbers of high-need charter schools into buildings? Who's making these decisions? Is the superintendent involved in this or is this something that special ed does? I'm looking at the budget for some of my schools and I'm like, why does Ferry seem to have a large portion of the high-needs char, uh, uh, special needs in, uh, special ed classrooms? Is that a coincidence? I'd say not. And so when I'm asking these questions about equity, I, I, I need some understanding. How is it that one school can have six 1-1s, all six 1-1s for, for the most time, for the most purpose, and another school does not? And I'm trying to figure out who makes that decision? Okay? And I want to know why is it being made? So I'm looking at my schools and I'm seeing how there has been a shift of moving special ed, the high-need special ed classes into certain schools. Where's the balance with that? Where's the equity piece with that is what my concern is, Madam Interim Superintendent. And I know you, you know, you may not have these questions, but to answer today, but I'm going to ask them, okay? And I expect, and I, this is not the first time that I've asked this question. Okay, so we have, when I look at the teacher aide and the teacher assistance, you know, what schools have teacher assistants? We know that a teacher assistant can assist with instruction. What school gets all the teacher aides? When, when we're talking about the equity piece, I'm not seeing that it's being handled properly or in my opinion with, with, in a prudent manner. And so that's the question that I'm asking. I would like to see a, 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 a chart for the general fund, the money that are returned to the general fund, from what sources they're coming from. I want to know that. So last week we were told that, and I'm not sure if Jeff, our CEO and CFO went over that, but where are the, how much money is anticipated to be returned back to the general fund? And how do you continue to justify returning money back to a general fund and not put money aside to make sure that those kids, that got their resources? See, to talk about equity and then to put it in, in practice is two different things. And it's just not happening, okay? And it consistently is not happening. And so I want to ask those questions. My other question is, where's the community involvement piece? Why don't we have, do we have money set aside for the potential of allowing people to assist us in the community involvement piece? Or is that something else? The superintendent normally has a set aside. How much is that set aside? And what is that money going to be used for? And so I'm concerned about the equity, the equity of this budget is one thing that, but it is not equitable, taking resources from children after you didn't give them, taking money from children after you didn't give them the resources. And I'm not getting off of this horse until I get my answer. Okay, I'm letting you know, I'm going to ride it to the end. Okay, because it's important that we start looking at the decisions that are being made. How is it that schools in the Ferry District are being bombarded with these special ed overlays and the most difficult children are being forwarded there? And, and, and to me, it stinks. It stinks because this has been brought up before and nothing changed. So something is going on where people are making decisions and not taking into consideration the impact in certain areas. It's just not fair. As I look at some of these budgets, my head is turning around, I'm, I'm just spinning. And I'm, I'm very concerned that people are not, are talking the talk, but not walking the walk, Madam Interim. And that's why I'm, I'm asking those questions today.
So some of those questions require a deeper look. You know, they're very specific and I want to be, you know, accurate when I respond. So I want to have the opportunity, we just recently assigned teacher aides and assistants to our chief academic officer's supervision. So prior to this, they kind of fell under a principal. Now they will be assigned to, you know, an office. And so she'll be able to work with her team and take a look at, you know, how they are assigned. I do know that with the school-based budget piece, I believe this year, one of the things I've been assured is that as principals have requested things, we've been able to pretty much give principals what they feel they need to adequately run their buildings. What they've requested, we've been able to approve. So that equity piece is there in that they're getting what they have asked for. So if they've asked for more teacher aides or assistants, I believe we've been able to support that. But I want to do a deeper dive on some of the questions that you've asked so that I can make sure that we're answering you accurately.
No problem. I, you know, the thing here is, and I respect that, but the thing here is that you cannot, you cannot justify some of the actions that have occurred from my perspective in that the heavy weight that certain people are required. See, you can't just look at the, the report and say, oh, this school has 24% students with disability and this school has 17%. So that, that must be okay. You have to dig even deeper into that and ask what classes, what type of classes are in this school? Are all this, are all six 1-1s in this building versus 15 1-1s in another building? A parent told me the other day that her son needed an eight, should be in a six 1-1. He has been put in an eight 1-1 or, or even higher. I think they moved him up and he's been acting out and there's no assessment of moving him back. So I'm, I'm really concerned about the special ed piece from the perspective that it just appears that certain schools are heavier burdened or labored with them than other schools. And we need to take a look at why this is happening. Who justifies making these moves? Who justifies putting in special ed six 1-1s all in one building? Who justifies that? And those are the questions that I want answered, okay? Because that certainly changes the culture of the building and it certainly puts additional stress on staff, which is not fair when that can be spread it over the district. That's what I'm saying here. Okay. And then fairness to the students as well as the principals, but we need to start looking at that and, and making sure that this stuff is being addressed properly. And, and I want the general fund dollar amount that is the money that's being returned because I personally have a problem that this money keeps being returned. And you saw a couple of weeks ago, last week, that the board has a problem with this money being returned and students not getting the resources that they were promised at the beginning of the budget cycle. It's not okay every year to put $10 million back into the general fund after children have not gotten the resources. So I'm not going to get off of this, this, this horse until I get it fixed. And I'm telling them, I'm going to ride it to the end. Okay, I really need to know what's going on and with the special ed department and how it's being handled and why we feel it's okay to continue not to fill positions and not provide children additional supports the year next, the following year. I have major concerns about that. Thank you for that. One other thing is I'm concerned about expanding enrollment. Has anything been done about expanding enrollment in our high schools since our last conversation?
So we certainly are looking at, you know, relocating some of our high schools so that we can expand space for students. I've recently requested a report so that I know where we have staff members that have offices that right now are in high schools so that we can, you know, so we, we are looking at all of that so that we can maximize. Because again, I'll say it on the record, you know, we want more students in the Buffalo Public Schools. That is what we want, more students in our classroom. So I'm looking at all of those spaces where we have staff right now that, you know, due to limitations of space, are taking up classroom space. But we're also looking to move a couple of high schools where we have two and three high schools in one location so that we can expand, accepting more.
So when will we know that's done? Because parents are anxious to know what's going to happen to their kids. We're almost 30 days out from school ending.
Right. The timeline, you know, that I've said is that we want to be able to do this by September, which means when we backdate it, you're absolutely right. There's a lot that has to happen in order for parents to know. You know, we've got ninth, eighth graders who are moving up to ninth grade, that parents need to know where their schools will be. So we will be expediting it, but I don't have an exact date of when, you know, it'll happen. Just know that, you know, we are working on it and we want to do it as quickly as possible and as early as possible so that we can inform principals. You know, there's a lot that has to happen though in order for us to move schools out of their current location into new locate, locations.
I understand that, but I'm talking about from the parent and the two-student perspective. Okay, I, I would expect as a parent that I would know where my child is going before the end of the school year. Okay, I would expect that's a reasonable expectation, particularly since so many schools are opening up and taking on additional students. So I'm just trying to figure out if we know that we're going to have 200 additional seats, is that, has that been shared with the registration department? Are they making sure that they accommodate? I'm just trying to figure out where.
No, we're, we're kind of at the beginning stage, so that hasn't been shared with them yet. And we haven't said anything to parents yet because we have to go out to the buildings and see what we need to do to get them up to COVID so that then we know for sure that it's going to happen. And as soon as we do, we will get the information out.
Okay, I'm not being a hard, I'm not being hard. But what I am doing is, is that your staff knew that they were going to do this over a month ago. Okay, so the fact that they have not been out to the buildings and done their assessment or whatever, they have not put together this, I'm concerned about it. What I'm concerned about is improving the beat. Okay, I need to see that they understand the urgency as Jeff just shared with us, that we have three new charter schools and four schools that are expanding on, on our backs and that for whatever reason that we're not recognizing that this is urgent. So that means that the midnight oil may need to burn in order to get it done. Because from what I'm reading in our policy, many of this should have already been in place. Prior to you getting here, Interim, okay, there should have been an idea of the, the space piece that had been in place as well as the conditions of our building should have been in place. And this stuff was not done under the prior leadership. And so you're, I just want to, you know, put people on notice that it is my expectation as a board member that our policies are followed and that people move up and start and lockstep and get this done ASAP so that we can tell parents who have applied back in what? When did they apply? Back in October?
December.
In December? When their children, their children can, where their children. That's what I'm concerned about, saving Buffalo Public Schools and, 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 and getting, and getting this handled. I'm sorry. So I'm, I'm not impressed that prior to you getting here, this stuff was not in place and they still have not put it in place. I'm not impressed with that. Thank you.
Okay. Just want to assure you that the team is working on it. It will be expedited. It's my goal, the same as yours, that we have a seamless transition to September and that parents are notified as soon as possible where their children will be going to school. So just, just know that, you know, we are on top of it. I can't speak to what happened prior to me, but now that I'm here, the team is working on it. Thank you, Madam Interim Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, for your commitment to getting our children back into our schools. We have a hand up at City Hall. I don't know if it's Terrence or, or Lou, which one or both?
Oh, thank you, Chairwoman Woods. And thank you again, Mr. Pritchard, for a very, very detailed presentation. And, and as we move forward, the direction that we should be going in. Thank you, Dr. Tanja Williams, also, you know, for leading this district. And I know that when you say that you're looking into something, that you're really taking deep look in things because you have so many changes that happened since you've been here. And that's positive for our, our district and our, our children and our staff. So I would just like a couple of questions. One of the questions that I have was concerning, back, I believe back in October, when Dr. Cash was, was here as the district leader, we were talking about bus drivers, we were talking about bus aides and security. And I know since then you did a great job in getting bus aides and I hear commercials, you know, going frequently now with first student about bus drivers for the district. We also, he said that we just going to hire 30 security officers. I would like to know how many of those security officers were we able to hire within our budget as of today since this year? And also, one of the things were, that we talked about on top of that was the tennis teachers. We know that tennis, tennis teachers have the ability, I think I got a bill going on. It's our, it's our early six o'clock bill. But, but we like to say about the tennis teachers, the tennis teachers, we know they got a privilege to go to the children homes. And I know that we have a number of children that have returned to schools as of, as of yet back from COVID that I know the district are reaching out to. And so where are we at with that, the tennis teacher? I know that was under Dr. I know that was under um Dr. Cash's regime, but I also wanted to bring that up as according to our budget to see if we are able to uh secure more tennis teachers and be able to reach those children who need the help and those families that need help.
Hey.
That's my first question.
I think the bells are gonna stop in a few minutes.
Okay. I think that was more than six, wasn't it?
Okay, yeah, maybe I'll just uh go ahead and.
You do so.
Um, so with respect to the security officers, uh, Dr. Wright has shared with me that she has really established a very close relationship with our human resource department, specifically with uh Chief Holly McGee. And so I'm going to turn things over to them, but I do believe just for the month of March that we hired eighteen um security officers, which is unprecedented. But I'll turn things over to uh Ms. Holly McGee to answer specific questions about that. And then I have Dr. Brown on who can respond about the attendance teacher piece. You're muted, Ms. Holly McGee.
Oop, thank you. So I apologize. Thank you, uh, Superintendent Tangia Williams, Board Member Heard, for that question. We're excited about security. So we have done some really strategic and out of the box thinking regarding hiring security for the Buffalo Public Schools. Uh, thanks to Mr. Barnes, Mr. Karan Barnes. He made sure it hit the media outlets um and newspapers that we are looking to hire forty uh security guards and people have come out. We have uh individuals that have worked at Rite Aid. They have worked with um some of our other security firms in the um area and they have replied with us for Buffalo Public Schools, so we're really excited about it. Um, to date, I believe that since we have made this effort, we've had eighteen people approved and ready to be assigned to buildings. We had one start yesterday. Excited about the opportunity, really excited about the opportunity uh and um out there on with his boots on the ground, ready to roll. So uh, it's been pretty successful for the hiring of the security guards. However, there is a vetting process with that responsibility as security for the Buffalo Public Schools. You can't just come in and become a security guard based on um your resume. There are some uh prerequisites and some credentials that you must have in order to meet the qualifications for both civil service in the Buffalo Public Schools in order to become a security guard with our schools. You have a very important role in our district and we have to make sure that we have top talent providing that service to our students and to the staff of Buffalo Public Schools. But um, Dr. Wright and I have worked collaboratively to make sure that on Mondays, there are open interviews for those that are qualified, that have met the prerequisites. They have to have to become a security guard in the Buffalo Public Schools. So with that being said, Mondays, they're interviewed and shortly after that, they are in our school building. So we're really, really excited. We are trying to close the gap. I have been given a charge from Dr. Williams for all of our um operational uh positions such as teacher aides, bus aides, food service, uh, security guards to close that gap, to make sure that I have a good, sound relationship with uh civil service, the city of Buffalo's civil service, and that I do. We have a much quicker turnaround time in our approvals. Of course, after that, we are not gonna compromise our uh prerequisites from the district, which would be the fingerprinting and the dispositions that are needed to make sure that we are providing um our students with individuals that are uh appropriate and uh likely to provide a good service to our students. So we still have to go through the necessary vetting process in order to get people in the buildings, but it is happening and it's happening at a revved up pace. So we're really excited about it. I'm not sure if Dr. Wright wants to speak to it any further, but she's more than welcome.
Thank you for that, Ms. Holly McGee. Um, you know, I also wanna say that, you know, it's been really um, you know, an innovative team effort. We met with uh Police Commissioner Chief Grimalia. Um, where President Pichucci kind of helped to facilitate that so that we can expedite, you know, any way that we can getting folks cleared and onboard. We also plan to, you know, we're going to festivals this summer. We will have flyers and information that are very comprehensive, very parent friendly on how folks can access jobs in our district. So we're going to the people. We're not gonna sit back here in City Hall and just wait for them to come to us or hope that they will look on our webpage and, you know, find the information. We're trying as many innovative things as we can and going to them. So I'll turn things to Dr. Brown to talk a little bit about attendance teachers and what we're doing there.
Okay, good evening. So with attendance teachers, we did hire additional attendance teachers. We're really working on uh changing the structure and it's been really effective. We've been partnering with the Office of Shared Accountability. We meet weekly with our um attendance teachers and they meet on Saturdays, um full days. As a matter of fact, I believe they meet um this Saturday. And so they are um definitely researching and searching for students who have not returned um doing complete attendance audits. And also, we have them working within a team within the school because we realize that some of our attendance teachers are assigned to more than one building. So we know that we wanna have a cross collaborative team really wrapping um their arms around our students. And we are just continuously uh growing in that area. We know that COVID has had a true um impact on attendance. Um, recently, our numbers have definitely grown, so some students have been out for that. So we are just definitely keeping in close conduct contact, working directly with our buildings and our school, the school principals. They have um created plans and and working, working with district level as well as in the building to make sure that we um have our students return as soon as possible into improved attendance and really trying to get to the root of what the what the concerns are. And that's why we partner very closely with our social emotional learning team in our in our division, where we're working with um restorative practices, really trying to find out exactly why you're not coming to school. How can we support the families? I'm sorry, Mr. Heard, did I answer your question? I wanna make sure that um I addressed what you were asking.
Uh, yes, you did. Uh, how many uh tennis teachers were hired during this process and how many are we looking forward forward to hire? Thank you.
Oh, sure. We hired seven additional in in August. We have twenty-one attendance teachers. We are seeking to hire more. But again, we really want to look at the structure and how we um utilize our attendance teachers. And again, we're really looking at that approach where it is a team approach. And we also are looking at the various skill sets of our attendance teachers because we can just utilize those um particular skill sets to be able to leverage more support. And then again, working within our Division of Student Support Services. Also, again, it's been a wonderful partner with the Office of Shared Accountability, looking at that data, drilling down, analyzing. So we are looking to increase um the attendance, but again, more importantly, the model and and what it looks like.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mrs. Brown. Um, my 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 reason why I asked those questions was because I know that um more parents that I speak to have concerns over security, even though I know this district is taking a lot of concerns over security and the measures that we use in to keep our schools safe. And that's one thing that our Internships Superintendent talks about, is safe schools and making allowing parents to send their children without having to worry about, you know, um, what could become and what could happen. Also, uh, with the tennis teachers, I know they have more um authority to go into the homes of the children and and actually see what's going on with the problems and issues. And uh, I believe with COVID in mind and and dealing with uh um things that's going on in our community that that uh the tennis teachers are are more needed now than ever. And and I'm really concerned about the effectiveness of our attendance teachers. Um, what are they able to do uh with with individual cases and 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 what's been the outcome? Having a metric so that we can um look at, see how many students or families have they reached and how many came back to school or on on the track of coming back to school. Um, really that's capture our kids and and get them back on track for education.
We can get that information for you. We can get that. Um, I I will share that, you know, through the school-based budget piece, that several principals found value in their attendance teachers and have increased the amount of attendance services. Uh, certainly COVID, you know, and the way that they normally do work probably impacted them being able to actually go into homes because of COVID. And we were in a high zone until recently. Well, I believe we're in a high zone again effective today. So that impacts their ability to, you know, to do the job as they traditionally have done. But what Dr. Brown shared is that now they're not just going out Monday through Friday. There are Saturdays when families are more likely to be home that they're going out. But that requires some training because, you know, you're going into now a different situation. And, you know, having some of them pair up, if they're going into bilingual households, you know, we wanna make sure that when they get there, they're able to communicate effectively with the families. So, you know, those are all things that probably have impacted that. But we can certainly take a look at, you know, getting you the data that you're requesting about, you know, the effectiveness. And, you know, just keep in mind that this year was just an unusual year.
Yes. Yes, and we definitely can get that data. We actually keep that data. Um, all of the attendance teachers are required to submit their logs, their efforts, how many homes they visited, how many families they reached out to and what was the account outcome. And that is also shared with the building levels. So we'll get that too.
Okay, just a couple of a couple more questions. Uh, thank you for your report and thank you for um getting that information back to the board. Um, just a couple more, I don't wanna keep us too long, but um other one was the modified um unified programs, um, including the um All High Stadium. I seen the email that came back from that, from that question. And I believe we had two point three million dollars that was a that was um set aside for All High Stadium in phase one. And we had two other phases that we're going through in stadium work design. But my my question was concerned about the modified program, which is um, was that included into our general fund? Was that added added into our general fund budget for our, um, as you balance it this year?
Yes, Terrence, it it was, it it was. So we we and and it was not in the initial draft that because we were still looking at the numbers and and trying to understand the budget. So it was not in the initial draft, but subsequent to us sending the board the draft budget, um, the superintendent approved in the in the general fund um, the inclusion of of that modified sports program. Um, and it at it's it's we're we're planning to phase it in. So because this is, you know, this is a, it's it's not an insignificant program. There there's a lot to it. So it the plan is to phase it in um starting at at one one point, um, I think one point one five million in in twenty-two, twenty-three. And that's gonna cover um uh boys and girls uh football and soccer. Um, and then in winter, um, a boys and girls basketball. And then spring, uh, boys. That's four four sports. Um, and and we can send some more, um, we could send you some more details. Obviously, you know, Mike House can can explain much better than I um, kind of on on the rollout plan and and so forth. But uh, you know, we we were excited to uh kinda come, you know, close the loop on that and get that into the budget.
Now, I'm super excited about it. I think, you know, it's another way for us to advertise to, you know, parents that have made other choices that, you know, we're contenders, you know? We want our children, you know, at younger ages and younger grade levels because we know that in the city of Buffalo, our children have raw talent, you know, for sure, when it comes to athletics, but it does need to be cultivated. And so if it's happening in other places, we want it happening here for our children too. So I'm super excited about that modified sports program.
Oh, thank you. I believe the original number that we had was two million and here is allocated one point nine million. And we also have some summer programs that we're supposed to roll out this year also, starting in about thirty-five days for the modified program for the Buffalo Public School students. And that was the um, the basketball, all summer basketball, including with the uh girls' flag football. And the flag football, I believe, was funded by the NFL. So I don't know how that money's.
I know for summer, um, I I spoke with the athletic director today and for summer, we are scheduled, I wanna say football, basketball, swim, soccer, uh volleyball, and I believe cheerleading also. Um, we are set up for that for the summer. And for the fall, um, you know, we've worked with him because it's a phase in piece. And we wanna make sure because what I heard Board Member Belton Cottin say is we don't wanna keep giving money back to the general fund. So we wanna set ourselves up to have to do that again. So if there's hiring, equipment, there's a lot that has to happen in order for us to be ready in August or September for the modified sports program. So when we worked with him, that's the figure that um, you know, he was agreeable to.
Okay, uh, one reason why I say that about um how you strongly state that we want our children back. I know the basketball program is a big push in the summertime here in the city of Buffalo. We had legendary programs in the city of Buffalo, which doesn't exist anymore. And as we roll out a plan to capture our kids back uh this summer, uh, I know that there's a charter program who's um working collectively together with other charters to try to capture that basketball program. And it's something that that we made um people aware of that 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 was being planned because of the the planning phase of it. But we wanna make sure that that we support this commitment and that we can um roll our own plan with the district so that um we can recapture our kids and um bring them back here to the Buffalo Schools.
I agree. I'd like to speak with you more about that. I met with the mayor on Friday and he mentioned something, I think it's called the Jordan in Warrick uh basketball camp that's happening at ECC. I'm not sure if that's the one that you're mentioning. Um, but certainly we've made sure that our students are informed and aware of that. But I can speak with you offline about the specifics. If if it's more like a Randy Smith kind of league that, you know, that you're speaking of, I can speak with you a little more about that to find out some more about it.
Please, thank you, um, um, Dr. Tangia Williams. Also, um, my last question was was about um the virtual pathways program. Um, uh, we looked into that and look at the high numbers that is that's that's allocated per each child. And um, I don't know if you're gonna do a detailed report or or send a report out to the board about that and see how we can in the future look to um um to see where the monies are being spent, how they being spent and the effectiveness of the spending of those monies and see how we can maybe operate differently in the future, uh, just for cost-saving purposes for the district.
So we absolutely heard the board um last week loud and clear about um just some questions into, you know, the spending regarding pathways um versus the outcome that they have gotten from pathways. And so we immediately put in place um a committee of diverse stakeholders that are taking a look at the program. Um, I believe that they have some principals on the committee, some parents. It's a pretty diverse group and they are looking at unpacking so that we can maximize that program. So I believe that I have Associate Wilson that is on. She's kinda taking the lead in David Hills. Um, and they could probably give a quick update, like one minute or less, on where they are with that committee. But we we've heard loud and clear and they immediately went into action and putting that committee together.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I'll start it off and kick it over to um Associate Hills. Um, the committee was put in place. Um, they've met now, um, we we have our second meeting tomorrow. Um, and we wanted to make sure we cut across all key stakeholders. So we've reached out to the bargaining units to make sure that we followed all of the protocols to engage school leaders, engage um, you know, uh, teachers, engage um students. Uh, we worked along with the schools in question, both academy and um path, virtual pathways to identify, you know, who could participate in this. And we did a baseline uh uh meeting that really highlighted our current state so that we can grow from there. And we've already taken all of that feedback. They had some really great feedback on how to improve. So I'm gonna turn it over to David Hills.
David, we cannot really hear you. Is your sound turned down?
Hey, um, Dr. Woods, um, I mean, um, trustee Woods, uh, I know you have, other people have other questions until, um, David can get on. I know you want to keep things going. So if you want to, uh, go ahead and take another question.
David may have to just sign off and come back in. That normally fixes it.
Okay. Okay. Well, we want to go around and give each board member, uh, opportunity to ask any questions if they have anything further. Kathy, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown.
No further questions. Minds were answered. Thank you.
Okay. Sharon Belton-Cottin.
Waiting on the number for the general fund, the money that's being returned this year to the general fund anticipated.
That was, that was a vacancy report by school that was also ordered. So I too am waiting because, uh, the cost and how it's distributed is, is the equity issue. Let's see, who else do we have on? Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Chair, Chairwoman Woods. I don't have any questions.
Okay. Well, then, um, I think we might be able to conclude the budget portion of this meeting almost on time. It's 6:20. We should have, we're supposed to take those sex. So, uh, Madam Superintendent, I give you the closing remark. Thank you very much. CFO Jeff Pritchard for your report and we await your final numbers.
Okay. Um, thank you for a robust, um, conversation. I have taken down notes and have the questions that have been asked of us and assure you that we want to get these responses to you by Fridays for the trip time to review the responses because our goal, our hope is that next Wednesday, we'll have an approved budget that meets everybody's expectations. So we want to make sure that we get that to you by Friday.
Thank you. And with that, uh, I turn it over to Mr. Terrence Hurd for the Educational Support Committee. I see there's a lot of people waiting. So let's, I don't want to keep them any, waiting any further.
Thank you, Chairwoman Woods. Thank you, everybody. Welcome to the, to the May edition for the Education Support Committee. Um, as we move forward, I don't want to take everybody's time, but we have some very exciting news, um, this, this month about our summer programs and also about, uh, the state of mental health. Uh, first of all, to all the ladies that I'm given the opportunity to say congratulations to, um, Happy Mother's Day. And I know a lot of us has, have lost, uh, mothers in the past and, 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 and right now. So we're keeping prayer for all of us. And, um, as we get through these days and, uh, we move forward. Also, we celebrate, uh, Mental Health Month, uh, this month also. So, uh, so a lot of events and everything that's going on about mental health. And, uh, we have a presentation about, about mental health that will be going through, um, the Bergard School here. So, but to kick things off, um, thank you, Senator Kennedy, for the $250,000 in transportation funds that he helped give, had helped with the district. And I know that definitely will be an asset to our after-school programs, um, including the unified modified sports program. So, uh, thank you again for your work and your service. So as we go forward, give me one second, please. Here we go. As we go forward for open remarks, um, I'm going to leave, um, Dr. Tanya Williams, our inter-supervisor, to open remarks, uh, covering our Say Yes summer programming and also our Project Aware at Bergard High School. Uh, Dr. Tanya Williams.
Thank you, Chairman Hurd. I'm really excited about these two presentations. We're first going to hear from, uh, Mr. David Russ and Say Yes, who is our strategic partner and they have been providing unyielding support to our students. I first got to know Say Yes as a principal and I have a lot of respect for the work, uh, that they're doing. Specifically tonight, uh, we'll be discussing, or he will be discussing, a very robust summer experience for many of our students. And it's going to help them with the learning loss that they have experienced through the pandemic. And so it's going to help to boost their achievement. There's also going to be a STEM piece. I'm super excited about that. Um, some enrichment activities. Um, you know, a lot of things happen during the summer for our children. They get to learn new social skills and how to meet new friends and, you know, they are in front of new role models and all of those things. So we're going to hear about some of that exciting work. And then we're going to hear from the team at Bergard High School under the leadership of Ms. Watson. She has brought her exquisite team with her. Um, we have a project administrator, Arlene Adams, who manages to the detail, um, a grant that she is very, very committed to. It's called Project Aware. And I was very involved with that grant when we first got it. And now Dr. Brown is overseeing it. It's about mental health and she's got a team and they're working really hard over at Bergard to de-stigmatize, um, mental health. And so they're doing trainings and all kinds of other exciting things. So I'm going to sit back and I'm going to listen to the presentations and enjoy.
Thanks, Dr. Williams. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Cool. Thanks for the invitation. I have an equal amount of respect for your leadership for the district, the great work happening in Buffalo. Uh, I'd like to thank Board Member Hurd for inviting us to present this evening as well, too. I'll be brief at the top. I'm going to turn it to the brains behind this operation then. Um, we're really excited to partner for these opportunities that you're providing talented students this summer. Um, the strong data behind this work and it's equally backed by really enriching experiences for young people, fully complementing the good work happening in the district this summer. Uh, you'll see that there's more hours and more BPS students involved this year as well, too. So it would be a great summer for many students. Um, leading the charge for this is my colleague, Dan Cross Viola. Uh, also, also with us is Tanya Staples, our Senior Director for Community Schools. So I'll turn it to Dan, who's going to take us through a slide deck for about 15 minutes. Uh, then we'll be happy to take any questions you may have this evening. So Dan, can you take it from here, please?
Great. Thank you, Dave. And thank you, uh, to all of you for having us tonight. Very excited to be able to give you an update on where we're at with summer camp planning. And very excited to be yet again this year, part of a very robust array of summer programming that BPS is doing across the board. Uh, Tara Sims and her team have done a great job putting together a lot of great opportunities and we're so excited to be a part of that again this year. Go to next slide, please. To give you a little bit of a background on the initiative, we started this back in 2015 and it's for pre-K through sixth grade BPS students. And on average, we serve 1,400 students at 31 sites each, each summer. The goals have been threefold since the beginning. It's first and foremost about academic growth. Uh, we talked about the summer learning loss, but also there's a lot of unfinished learning that has been induced by the pandemic that we need to really grapple with. So we, we focus mostly on the, the literacy and math side of this, but as Dr. Williams mentioned, there will be a STEM component as well this year. Uh, secondly, it's about health and wellness. We put a lot of time and energy into the social emotional learning side as well as physical health. And last but not least, it's also about safety. We, we know that children need safe places to go over the summer where they can be in the care of, of responsible adults. And so that is a, a key part of this as well. This is a very collaborative initiative. We work very closely with, uh, BPS. Um, the two organizations really kind of in the center of this wheel, but the city and the county are big in this. Uh, we, we contract with the community of faith-based organizations to operate the sites on the ground. The parent organizations in the district are key in the planning. The philanthropic community is also key in the planning as well as on the funding side. So lots of, uh, folks, uh, kicking in the same direction to make this happen. Next slide, please. When we first started, uh, the initiative is, is a lot different than it is today. And I think what happened along the way is that we just learned that we could do some things to elevate the initiative to take it to the next level. And so in 2018, we pulled together a, a work group of key stakeholders from across the community to do a deep dive on best practices, best practices in summer learning from across the country. And what we really came, um, to is that there's five key enhancements that we thought would really help take this model to the next level. The first one is that we need to lengthen the program day. We had traditionally been a four-hour day program, but we knew from the research that we really needed to get to that seven-hour day to really enable us to do the, the things that help us move the needle on student enrollment or student outcomes. And so that really set us up to be able to double up the academic time to three hours a day and double up the enrichment time to two hours a day. We also knew it wasn't enough just to have more academic time. We knew we needed to fill it with evidence-based curriculum. So all of our sites have ELA and math curriculum now that is really intended for out-of-school time. And then lastly, in order to maximize time on task and make sure that, that every program hour is used well, we need to incorporate paid planning and training time for the site staff. So we got a chance to pilot this in 2019, saw some really promising student outcomes coming out of that. Then we fully pivoted to this last school year and we'll use it again this school year. Next slide, please. So to give you a flavor of what this summer will look like, it'll be a six-week program. We'll operate Monday through Friday and the sites will, will have, uh, different start times, uh, site to site, but they will be 8:00 AM, 8:30 AM, or 9:00 AM. And we had projected that we would serve 1,375 students at these sites up until today. And today we got some really great news about some additional funding that just came in. And so we will be actually expanding that a bit, adding additional student slots to the, to that, that projection. Um, to give you a sense though, 1,375 is about what we served last year. So we were about projected to be on par to the same size as we were last year. Same as last year, we will have a mixture of seven-hour and four-hour sites. And thanks to the increased funding commitment that BPS is making to camp this year, we were able to expand the balance of students that'll be at those seven-hour sites. So last year, we had two-thirds of our students at those seven-hour sites. This year, it'll be, um, closer to three-quarters of our students, an increase of about 130 students this year at those seven-hour sites. So we're very happy about that. Uh, regardless of, of site length, though, all sites will do the evidence-based academic curriculum. It'll be led by certified teachers. All sites will do enrichment, uh, which will look different site to site, but at a minimum, it'll, it'll include social emotional learning, physical activity. All sites will have healthy meals and then all sites will meet mandatory staffing ratios. Next slide, please. As far as student eligibility goes, all students must be BPS students, um, although they can attend a district school, a charter school, an agency school like Falk or Gateway-Longview, or universal pre-K program. All students must be in grades pre-K through sixth during this current school year. And all students must be at least five years old by the start of camp. And one other thing that the, the increased BPS funding this year is really enabling us to do is that we can secure more spots for students who attend district schools. So every year we look at the percentage of the budget, budget that is made up of BPS funding. And then we require that all of our sites must serve, at least that, that percentage of their roster must be made up of students who attend district schools. So last year, 55% of our budget for summer camp was BPS funding. That meant that, uh, students who attended district schools had to comprise at least 55% of site rosters. This year, that's up to 65%. So this is a very, uh, good, um, um, thing for BPS district students. And it means that we have, are able to secure at least 130 more spots for BPS district students this year. Next slide, please. You can see on this slide, the 21 site partners that we have that are operating those 27 sites and where they are across the city with the, the blue being the seven-hour sites and the green being the three, or the four-hour sites. And it's worth noting here, too, that we work closely with, uh, BPS on, um, really identifying where students with economic need live and then allocating student slots, uh, proportionally. So we have the most slots in those areas. So you can tell that there's a definite concentrations of, of slots in, on the west side, Black Rock Riverside area, the east side, um, a lot in the 14215 area, some of the, uh, the highest areas of need in the district. Next slide, please. All of our sites will be following health and safety protocols. It's based on up-to-date guidance from the CDC, Department of Health, and Office of Family and Children's Services. And these account for, for everything, everything from arrival dismissal and how the ventilation happens, the social distancing, all of that is accounted for in these protocols. It's worth noting, though, that they are, uh, relaxed a bit from last year since the guidance from those regulatory bodies has relaxed as well, um, from, uh, last year. Um, but, um, it's a, it's definitely COVID is still with us. It'll, it'll definitely be something that we're living with for a while. And so our sites will be following protocols to, to, um, uh, mitigate the spread of COVID. On top of that, though, all of our sites will have permits or licenses from Erie County Department of Health or school age childcare on the state level. Um, those also have regulations that go with them that, uh, sites have to follow regarding health and safety. Next slide, please. In addition to the programming that happens day out, day in, day out of the sites, our sites will also be authentically engaging families, helping to understand the situation, identifying needs, and then when it's appropriate, making linkages to different services. So things like food, clothing, shelter, uh, medical care, dental care, mental health care, any of those things that we can do to really help connect that family to what they might need, we will work on that. If the site's not able to do that themselves, we'll refer through our, our Say Yes continuing services and externally as well. And then, of course, all of our sites, all the staff are mandated reporters. And so although we hope it never happens, we, we always monitor for signs of abuse and neglect and then, uh, alert the appropriate authorities, um, when, uh, as needed. Next slide, please. There are a few key partnerships this summer that are worth highlighting. The first is with Feedmore Western New York. We've partnered with them for the last few years now to incorporate the backpack program into several of our summer campsites. And through this program, students can take home healthy food over the weekends, which really enables them to have some food security over the, those, uh, weekend days when, when, um, program is not in session. And the other two programs are programs that we piloted last year that we're able to bring back thankfully again this year. The first is a partnership with our Boys and Men in Color program at Say Yes and the big Breaking Barriers Initiative. And through this, we employ young men from the youth council to provide racial equity themed workshops for our older students at, at sites. And then at the bottom there, we are partnering again with Neighborhood Health Centers, uh, their mobile health unit to make visits to the various, uh, campsites this year. And this will, this will actually be six visits that three of them will be to our summer camps, three will actually be to summer school locations, too. And we'll be working closely with Tara and her team on the enrollment, uh, of students for those, those, uh, days to make sure that we can provide physicals, immunizations, all those kind of things that we know are in high demand come the beginning of school year. Next slide, please. I think that next slide was just the thank you slides. I just wanted to say, uh, just in closing, thank you all so much for, for, uh, your commitment to this initiative and not just to this initiative, but your commitment to summer learning in general has been, has been very, very admirable. We're honored to be a part of that. But, uh, certainly this whole vast array of programs that BPS has going on this, this year and last year as well, is precisely what the community needs. And, uh, putting your, your, um, commitment behind that is, is great. So thank you to Dr. Williams and Ann Botticelli, Tara and her team, and of course, all of you on the board. And I'm happy to take any questions if anybody has any.
Yes. Uh, I'd like to first say, uh, thank you, um, Mr. Cross Viola for the work that you've done. And also thank you for visiting our, um, Breaking Barriers program also, uh, I believe a month ago, and, uh, working with those youth over there also. So, um, I'm going to start with questions. I'm going to start with the board president since she's here now with the microphone on, if you have any questions. But, uh, once again, we have our lovely bills going off. I think this is a short one because it's the half an hour. But I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, Dr. Tanya Williams, is there anything you want to say about the presentation beforehand? Okay, thank you.
Okay. No, it was, uh, very informative, just as I expected that it would be. I'm really excited about, you know, all of the opportunities that are going to be afforded to our students this summer. So I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. With that, we'll start off with, um, uh, Mr. Luca Chuci, Board President.
Thank you, Chairman Hurd, Coach Chairman Hurd. Um, yeah, this is, uh, again, it's a great program. Our best person's starting again. Um, I've had the opportunity to see the presentation more than once. I, I will say that the one thing that, uh, one of the presentations I did, or did receive, uh, did show the outcomes for the students. And I thought that that was very helpful, the actual outcomes, uh, but between students who attended the program and students who did, there was a marked and noted improvement, or at least a, a maintenance of achievement over the summer. We didn't see that summer slide of the kids who participated in summer camp. I had the opportunity to visit, uh, a few of them. Again, they were very impressive. Uh, I was very glad I had the opportunity. Keep up the good work. Thank you very much for presenting this evening.
Thank you. And, and yes, to that, to that point, uh, thank you for bringing that up. Um, we've seen every single year since we've done this initiative that those who have attended camp have been more likely than their non-camper peers to maintain and/or improve their reading and math over the summer months. And since we've pivoted to that 2.0 model in the last few years, we've seen that greatly greatly, greatly magnified in those, those sites that are doing the enhanced model. So that's definitely something that we're excited about. Their thing as well is that the satisfaction goes up too. The satisfaction is, is despite the fact these students are doing more academics now in this new model than they were before, because the, the curriculum is really intended for out of school time, it's engaging, it's hand-on, hands-on, it's experiential, um, the students love it and the satisfaction is higher. They're more, more likely to say camp is fun, more likely to say that they enjoyed the academic content and all that. So they're benefiting more on the outcome side, but also enjoying it more. So it's kind of a, a, a one-two combo there.
Thank you. Next we have, I know that Lawrence Scott has, uh, something he has to attend, but if you're still on, allow you to go ahead so you can, um, continue with your day. Mr. Scott?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Thank you Chairman Hurt. I, I just want to say that, you know, as always, Say Yes is a wonderful partner for our, our students. Um, I had the opportunity to visit one of the full day programs at Boys and Girls Club last summer. Um, and you know, with COVID, with the interrupted learning that our kids have experienced, um, it's these types of programs and approach, approaches, the supplemental above and beyond the school year that are absolutely necessary, um, to, to catch many of our kids up that are behind and providing those, them those enriching social emotional opportunities to engage with each other, um, beyond just the, the school year. So, um, happy to hear that the full day programming will be expanded. Um, it sounds like we're continuing to have, um, a variety of enriching options for our students. And just thank Dave and Dan for, for all the work that they do, um, especially throughout this pandemic. Appreciate their partnership. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mrs. Scott. So I'm going to go, go ahead and go down to our, um, multiple choice board here. And the first one up is, uh, Sharon Bell and Cottman. Um, if you have any remarks or questions, you're next.
Just, is this the entire presentation? Because I heard something at the beginning that I was interested in hearing more about. Uh, are you through David with the presentation or Dan, are you through with the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, so then I have some questions then. So, um, thank you so much. I appreciate the work that you do. Uh, it's a great partnership. I am concerned this year about attendance, uh, not just for your, um, program, but our summer school program as well. And I was wondering if we could possibly, uh, uh, Madam Superintendent and, um, uh, CEO David Russ, if we could put some sort of incentives in place this year to encourage our children to attend. I don't know what that would look like, if it would be monthly, I mean, a weekly, um, but if they reach certain plateaus or, uh, they come a certain percentage of the time that they might be able to be, uh, involved in receiving, uh, or picking prizes and things like that. I'm just concerned about making sure that, uh, our children attend because it's so important. If we're going to put the resources, uh, aside for this, that we maximize the involvement. And I don't know what that incentive would look like, but it could be gift cards, it could be, I don't know how we can work it out. Maybe if you attend all of them, you could pick from a different board or something. I don't know, but I just really feel that it's important that we monitor and hold our sites somewhat accountable to make sure the attendance is consistent if we're going to make sure that this really impacts. Have you guys had any conversations about that at all? How do we make sure we improve or keep attendance up this summer?
Absolutely. We, we have, for the past few years, we've been doing site competitions. So every single week, the sites compete against each other for pizza parties and popsicle pop-ups we call them. So there's four winners each week. Um, so there, there's an attendance category and an academic participation category. So sites, uh, that have the best rates of attendance and participation in academic stuff, they, they get a, um, award or with those things. It's really friendly, friendly kind of competition between the sites and what now it's been great. And this year additionally, we're going to add on to that, that when a site wins one of those awards, that site coordinator and one of their staff members will get a gift card. So there's now going to be some, some, um, incentive for the staff to really kind of want to hit that mark as well. But we're always open to other ideas and suggestions. I will say that attendance has always been pretty good in our initiative. We, pre-pandemic, we were about, I think we were eighty-three percent overall average attendance rate across this initiative. We were last year, uh, a little bit lower than that, a few percentage points lower, but also it's worth noting that the health and safety protocols do induce a lot of absences. I mean, people stay home because they have to, that we're, we're telling them you have certain symptoms, you can't come, or you are close contact, your site closed down because of, because of a case, you, you can't come. So there's that, when we went through our data last year, that suppressed the attendance rate a few percentage points. So we're not quite where we wanted to be, um, last year, but we, uh, we're definitely not in a bad spot, um, compared to where we were pre-pandemic.
So I'm wondering, um, if we, you can share some of those incentives with us, uh, as a district so that we may be able to incorporate some of them. It seems like you're, uh, head of the class, uh, in that area and...
I wouldn't say that. It's, it's as simple as letting sites pick which pizza part or which, which, uh, pizzeria they want to get their pizza from, you know, and we, uh, we order it or we show up with our popsicle pop-ups is kind of like our, our second runner-up kind of thing for each category, but that's just, uh, we show up with some ice cream cones or like popsicles and whatnot and the sites kind of are able to give those to the kids. But, um, yeah, it's been a, it's been a good thing to kind of get the, just those kind of, uh, competitive juices flowing for sites.
Okay. And so do you have an overall standard of what you would like to see each site maintain?
Yes.
Do you, do you, you do put that in place?
We do. So every single student is expected to be there for all but five days. And if you take those five days out of the equation, that gets you to eighty-three percent attendance. That's where we want to be at a minimum. We'd love to be higher than that, but we allow those five days because it allows families to go on vacation or go to a Cradle Beach Super Bowl camp or something like that. Um, so we allow that, but beyond that, we, we really want to, uh, make sure that the students who are enrolling camp and taking up a spot are really showing up. And so we have students on the waiting list every single year and we don't want them sitting on the waiting list if there's a student not showing up. So, um, all of our sites have wa- waiting lists coming into camp. If students don't show up, they move those students on the waiting list and move students off waiting list, onto roster. So we, we don't wait, you know, it's a short program. We, we, we don't want to lose a lot of time having students not showing up. And so we always bring folks, call folks up if, into our slots if there, others aren't showing up.
Okay. And finally, um, will, can you give us a, a date or a time that you would come back and share your, your, your successes with us? It seems like last year we sort of, it went long, long out and it, it typically around September, October or something, because you do monitor the students somewhat in their progress, uh, do, over the summer and if they've achieved anything, if I remember right. So I just would hope that you're able to come back in the fall, early fall as soon as possible and share with us the impact of your program while it's still fresh in our minds, okay?
Absolutely.
I appreciate the work you guys are doing.
Yes, thank you. And, uh, we generally have our eval, we do a process and outcome eval each fall. It's generally done end of October or early November, depending on, I know last year the, um, beginning of the year academic assessments, uh, because there were some new assessments in place and whatnot, it, it took a little bit longer than, than typically, which meant that we just, our assessment, our eval kind of went a little bit longer. But we're generally done end of October, early November. So happy to come out again in, in one of those months and, and present on our, on our findings.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the job you do. We appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the board is, um...
Wait, I'm sorry, one more thing. Aren't you going to tell us, uh, some, something new that you're bringing on this year or anything? I thought I heard that at the beginning of the presentation, Dan.
I wasn't sure what was, uh, what was final and, and able to be talked about or not. Is that, is that all fair game?
I don't know. I thought I heard something at the beginning. I was excited. I didn't know what was going on.
Hi, this is Anne Botticelli. We're sending, um, an item to the board for approval. I think that's what you're referencing with this comment.
What is the item?
Um, to purchase, to purchase some STEM materials.
And what are we going to do with the STEM materials?
They are for the Say Yes Camp.
Say Yes is going to have STEM this summer? Oh my goodness.
Yes, they are.
Thank you so much. We want to thank you also for helping us with facilitating some of that. Thank you. It's exciting. It's exciting for our kids. We know that they love it. They love hands-on stuff where they're able to, you know, be involved in making something and seeing it through and then seeing the finished product, but we're really excited about that. Thank you. I'm excited about our children learning and opportunity to do different things and grow. And thank you so much, Madam President for, uh, I mean Superintendent for what you're doing. Thank you. I was gonna say President, you, you really have elevated me if I'm not President. Yeah, but you know what? I've been out in the sun, walking the streets today. You're lucky to get what you get today, trying to get signatures for petitions. I think I'm, I think I'm, I have sunstroke. I'm calling 911.
We can't talk, um, politics. I'm sorry, um, yes, we got to move forward now. Thank you again and thank you for squeezing all the juice out of the fruit. So we're going to move forward. The next person is, um, um, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown. You have any, um, comments or questions?
Sure. I, thank you, um, for that, Dan. Hi, David. Yeah, I've always been a fan of Say Yes. Um, I remember operating one of the sites at the beginning. Um, I like the fact that you acquire certified teacher every day. I'm thinking if somebody looking at finishing a PhD, this would be a worthwhile, um, comparable, you know, compare and contrast kind of thing. Because when we look at the rigor that is included in this summer, um, including enrichment activities, we used to have field trip experiences that are really attracted young people. We used to have like one a week or, you know, twice a summer, something like that. That is another way of increasing attendance, where kids know that they're going off campus, um, somewhere that they have never experienced, for example, in the summer. Um, and then, uh, that mayor's reading initiative is, is important too, because there was a lot of competition with the sites, that who gets the most and who gets the bikes and the computers and, you know, all that stuff. So, you know, as I mentioned, I, I've always been a fan of Say Yes. I'm so glad that you received the additional funding and we support it as a board one hundred percent.
Thank you. And I, I should have noted too, that the, the field trips will be back this year. They were, they were on hold last year as we were not allowing transportation as part of our protocols last year, but, uh, we are, we are now allowing that again. Uh, so there will be at least two field trips, uh, at each site this year. Many sites will go on more than that, but at least two, um, so that's a good thing. And, uh, the reading rules is, is definitely still in the mix. Uh, it's part of the academic time. So we have, we've, uh, the city's been very, very, um, flexible with us with the reading rules. And so all the good work that students are doing as part of the academic curriculum, they're able to submit a lot of that work as reading summaries. And so that enters them into the, uh, the reading challenge where they can win bikes, as you mentioned, and, and other such things. Um, and that's one of the pieces that, that goes into our, our site competition for the summer, how much, um, the pace of the sites have with that.
Okay, uh, thank you. Is that, uh, any of your questions, Dr. Evans-Brown? Okay, thank you. Now you have the floor to, um, Board Member Palet Woods.
I'm muted, so Palet.
Okay, you're doing, you're doing an excellent job. Say Yes, uh, the summer program is absolutely needed. My only question was, um, was it going to be about field trips, but specifically, uh, does the field trips include a trip to the African Heritage Corridor? Because one of the things, uh, that I'm concerned about children learning is about their local contributions to, uh, we have the, um, Underground Railroad here in Buffalo and we have the Jesse Clipper, the Veterans Monument, uh, and the significant contributions of the veterans and also the, the, uh, uh, Music Museum, the, um, the African American Mu- Museum of Music. Do you take the children on a, a trip to that so they can, uh, see jazz music and, and the contributions of the local heroes?
Definitely. So the sites, um, they all, um, plan their own field trips. We don't necessarily tell them that they have to go here or go there, but I know a lot of sites do, uh, certainly, uh, leverage those, those local, um, resources we have, uh, diverse array, you know, culturally and, and, you know, historically speaking, uh, of different, uh, cultural institutions we have locally that they're, that they go to. I should say as well that BPTO, we've been working with them on a, like a cultural passport that they're, they're working on, uh, getting, uh, like days at various different cultural institutions where students could go for free. And they're also working with NFTA to provide bus tokens and whatnot so that it won't be a, a huge, uh, financial lift to the sites to go to these places. But, um, we need to check back in with them on, on the progress there, but I know that those, uh, the, all that was well underway, um, in December and January and hopefully there'll be some great opportunities for sites to do that at a low cost to the, to the sites.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay, uh, thank you. First I'd like to say thank you to, um, Mr. David Russ. I know he's a very busy man. He has a lot of responsibility, a lot of schools and a large staff to work with. And, um, I'd like to thank you for your work also, um, Mr. Cross Viola. And I have a couple of questions before, um, we end this sec, this session. This year, we wanted to get this news out early to the community so they can respond. So, uh, my question is about the district and what we're going to do to make sure that we can get this program filled before the end of school. So, um, about reaching out to the parents and the students, through teachers, uh, principals and whatever means, we, we have to go through our parent groups just to make sure that we get a lot of our seats filled with this program. So is there anything special that we're doing or any steps that we're taking different this year?
Absolutely. And now that you're saying this and realizing that, we must have skipped over a slide in the presentation, but we've received over fifteen hundred applications so far. And if you're doing the math, that means we have more applications already than we have spots. So, um, in the first three weeks, we've, uh, we've gotten a huge, huge response. Uh, flyers that went out to every single pre-K through sixth grade student, uh, robocalls, uh, through Connect, uh, um, the Connect ad went out, uh, recently. Uh, we're tabling it all at Saturday Academies and, and getting out a lot of different places. Got to a bunch of the, uh, the school, um, the parent, um, organization meetings and whatnot. So we're definitely doing a lot. We have a hu- whole ground game going on with promotions and whatnot, but, uh, we will have, I'm sure, um, well more applications than we have spots this year, which is, uh, it's great to see that demand. Uh, the other piece as well though, is that, uh, summer school enrollment is just starting now. Um, so we'll be working very closely with Tara and her team to cross-reference our enrollment rosters and, and hers to make sure that we are catching those students that might be duplicately enrolled and resolving those so we can ensure that we're really maximizing the reach of both programs. So we'll be doing that regularly starting end of next week.
Okay, great, great. And, uh, another question is about our community-based organizations. We know we have a, a number of, um, churches, um, leaderships that I've spoken with that would like to be part of a program with, with the district and Say Yes. Uh, is there still room with the new funding that you have available to introduce this to other programs or it hasn't been closed at this time?
We won't be able to add new sites. What we'll be doing is adding additional slots to existing sites. The, the process of, uh, of adding sites is a very long one. It, and it starts in January. Um, so everything from, they need to get certified, you know, with their permitting through the Department of Health and all that, all those permits are already all due, the food service, summer lunch program permits, all that just takes a very long time, um, to get it all up to speed. So, um, unfortunately we can't add new sites this year, but certainly if you have any thoughts on partners that would be interested in sites, the time that we really spend in the fall with, with, um, with site partners, with site partners is, is critical. So if you got folks, please send them our way. We'll be reaching out in the fall to, to talk about next school year.
Okay, great. And, okay, great, let's, uh, let's make those connections. And, uh, and I believe that you said you reached about one, about three quarters of our, our student population. Um, and, uh, I know that the sites that we visited, um, I've visited in the past, I've seen, um, students bring parents in or, or other siblings, you know, or, you know, for the food program or just coming to the program. Are they just going to be accepted also? So if a child goes to Buffalo Public Schools, they got an older brother or sister that may want to come to the program?
Yes.
Are they allowed to come also?
For the summer lunch you're speaking of, like for the lunch, the meals?
Yes. I, I've seen some just, just like try to hang around the program also, because, you know, that their little cousin was there or something like that, so.
So if, if they're, as long as they're eligible, they can attend. Um, if they're not eligible, a lot of our sites, uh, we allow our sites to serve additional students on their Say Yes roster. They don't get paid from us for those students, but they, they might have other grant funding to support them. Uh, so a lot of sites do have additional students, uh, that might, uh, not be eligible for the Say Yes portion, but do still get served in the program.
Okay, great, great. That's, that's exactly what I wanted to hear. And the last question I have quickly is about the enrichment program. Now thinking about enrichment, maybe somebody could take a course over or, or, you know, the two programs that you looked at was reading and math. That someone can improve on their math. Can that, can that in return, um, um, go back to their, uh, math scores that they, uh, tested in throughout the year, or is that just for the next school year?
It won't impact their, their, um, uh, their actual achievement during the, you know, as far as altering their grades or course credit or anything like that. Uh, but certainly it does give them a leg up coming into next school year. They're just that much more prepared to, to, uh, engage in the curriculum the following school year.
Okay, great, great. Uh, la- last thing, um, also with enrichment, we, we talked about textbook work and, and tablet, working on tablet and working in person. Um, can you, please give us a brief, uh, just summary of how that will work with the, with the summer program?
Yes, and we are, right now, as, as, um, Aunt Botticelli mentioned, uh, we are working, um, on some possibilities around STEM. And through that part of the, part of the, uh, conversation is about, uh, student devices and whatnot. We do know that all but one of our sites has, has Wi-Fi, uh, and the, the last one we think we could work around that and, and get that site Wi-Fi. So, and a lot of them have their own devices as well onsite. So we have the ability to, to utilize, um, to utilize technology there. And it's a matter of, uh, plugging in the right tools. Uh, we've always had access to the, the whole array of, of, um, resources that, uh, is available to all the BPS students, so that, that's no different this year. But the, the additional pieces around some of the STEM curriculum might be, uh, might be great to add in that would, uh, have that technology component.
Maybe talking about 1,400 students, um, how would we apply technology to 1,400 students? That's, that's my question is.
Right. So the sites, uh, so the students would have their, would have their BPS issued devices, um, they could bring to, to program each day. But on top of that, the sites have, um, a lot, most of them have their own devices onsite that students could access.
Okay, but in the year we collect our devices?
I don't know.
And how that will be re-administered, I'm not quite sure.
Um, Board Member heard for this year, um, Chief Botticelli has been working with, uh, Director Edwards so that the children will have access to their devices this summer.
Okay.
And they're in the program.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you. That's, um, that's the end of my questions. Dr. Tanja Williams, um, I don't know if anything you want to say after the board questions, but, uh, I'd like to say thank you for the work that you guys have, have done and that you're doing, uh, is, is most impressive. And I believe that you make a, a great, great, uh, example or a pilot for other districts across the country for the work that you do here. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Ditto, ditto. You know, we just really appreciate all that you all do for the Buffalo Public Schools. It's like there is no ask that is too high, and we appreciate, you know, every single thing that you do. I'm looking forward to the summer programming. I can't wait to get out and see some of the exciting things that I know are gonna happen for our students.
Take care.
Just thank you very much. And thank you for taking time this evening to spend a little time with us to talk about what the plans are.
Thanks, everyone. Happy to be here. Appreciate you all.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
And, um, for the last portion of our, uh, Education Support Committee meeting, uh, I'd just like to say I know that, uh, Principal Charlene Watson had a very long day today, so I would like to go ahead and get her going on about the mental health, um, program, uh, the Aware program there at the Burghardt High School and that, uh, the importance of it. And, and I'd like to, you know, just hear more about the effects of it also, this program being initiated inside the school and, and our student population and how it's been accredited for it. So I'd like to, I'll just yield the floor right now to the Aware program. And, um, Dr. Tanja Williams, are you gonna introduce the speakers or?
Sure.
Okay.
You know, as you shared, you know, mental health is something that, you know, we've been working hard in our district to de-stigmatize. We know that coming out of COVID, almost everyone has experienced something with respect to grief, trauma, anxiety, fear, all of those things. And so this grant, you know, we didn't know when we got the grant that we were gonna encounter a pandemic, but it certainly is very, very timely. I see that in addition to Ms. Watson and Mrs. Adams, we have, um, Dr. Fakara that's also, um, with us. So I am gonna turn things over to Principal Watson. They've done some fantastic things over at Burghardt. So I'm excited to hear about the program and the progress.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for having us. Uh, interim Superintendent Williams, I, I just remembered you were, uh, the initiator of this, uh, Project Aware grant. I forgot until you just mentioned that. So I thank you for that as well. And to our board members, thank you for always supporting Burghardt High School. Um, just to give you a quick snapshot of what the Project Aware grant entails, and, and Mrs. Adams will of course give you the technical side of the house. But from my perspective, um, just as a quick example, yesterday, as I was walking the hou- halls, I encountered a young lady who was visibly upset and crying. And of course I asked her, you know, what was wrong? And, and I took her into an empty classroom and I asked the usual questions. Did someone hit you? Did someone hurt you? Did something happen? And she says she had a fight with her mom, and she says she's just tired, tired. So I called mom to let mom know that I was speaking with her daughter, and she said that, you know, she's having, her daughter's having some health problems and they don't have health insurance, and, um, she's been upset for a couple of days now. So I said, "Okay, mom, I, I have a solution for some of this, and I'm, someone will get back to you within the hour." So I took her from the third floor to the first floor where our counseling suite is, courtesy of Project Aware. And I explained to our community ed leader that the family needed health insurance. I gave her the parent's information for her to reach out to the parent i- immediately, and then I transferred the young lady to the social worker, courtesy of Project Aware. And it's, uh, the, the counseling suite, and you'll see a picture of it in, uh, Mrs. Adams' presentation. It's a calm, welcoming environment, and I left her in good hands, and I felt confident that, you know, the problems will be resolved and the family will get the support that they need, and I went on with my day. So having said that, that's the whole point of Project Aware. We need, as a district, our schools need a more holistic approach to teaching and learning, and Project Aware certainly fills that gap. And we're able to provide care and support to our students and their families as a result, um, as it relates to mental health issues. So, Mrs. Adams, back to you.
Okay, and I don't do this alone. So we, um, in Project Aware, we're very closely with New York State and the Office of Mental Health. And so we are gonna leave this, uh, presentation off with Dr. Laura Fakara, and if we could have the slides, please?
I'm sorry, this slide is coming from a mirror?
The same slide that we presented before?
I'll show you.
I can also share my screen if that's helpful. I have the slides readily available.
Oh, that's that one. Okay, I got it. Okay, I think we are set.
Excellent. Thank you so much, and thank you for that introduction, uh, Mrs. Adams. You, as hopefully you know, you are, um, an essential part of Project Aware, and you really make things happen from a theory into practice standpoint. Thank you so much. Next slide, please. You all know better than anyone that the vision of Buffalo Public Schools is really to be sure that we're offering one voice, one vision, one mission. And part of that is with our Project Aware programming. As Dr. Williams noted, it is, um, not just any one specific type of student. And as Mrs. Watson then confirmed, it's lots of students are really, um, struggling, uh, when it comes to mental health, given the COVID-19 pandemic. It is really important to note that when we talk about mental health, we're talking about a whole continuum of conditions, right? Mental health can be mental health awareness, mental health wellness, mental health unwellness, right? So we're not just talking about students that have a mental health illness, so to speak. We're talking about the whole continuum. And statistics suggest that one in five people struggle with mental health, right? So just looking at the participant list, you know, we're about 35 people together this evening. Just about seven of us, if not more, struggle with our mental health. And, um, it is reasonable to suspect that, again, given the COVID-19 pandemic, that it may be even more than 20% of people. Thank you. Next slide, please. So tonight, what we'd like to offer you is not only an overview about New York State Project Aware at Burghardt High School, but to offer you an update in terms of what we've been up to and what we've been able to, um, impact in terms of change for student and staff. Next slide, please. There are four overarching goals of Project Aware related to community awareness, access to services, knowledge, um, which involves training, making sure that we're addressing the stigma that is around mental health, and really, again, getting to the idea that when we talk about "mental health," quote-unquote, we're talking about a continuum. Uh, in that everyone has mental health, right? It just kind of, um, occurs, you know, some days are better than others, right? And being sure that we meet people where they're at. Um, and certainly the idea of sustainability, as you know, we've done great work in Burghardt High School with Mrs. Adams and her team. Mrs. Watson, AP Johnson has been, um, uh, really supporters from the beginning, along with Dr. Williams. And Dr. Williams, uh, congratulations on your recent, um, position. And just to be sure that we keep, um, this work at the forefront, and we not only sustain, but we scale up and we continue to innovate. Thank you. Next slide, please. When we look at Project Aware by the numbers at Burghardt High School specifically, what you're seeing in front of you is, um, part of what our funder, uh, which is SAMSA, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, we are responsible for reporting on seven indicators for infrastructure promotion and prevention. Uh, policy development, workforce development, partnerships and collaborations, uh, training, screening, referral, access to service. And as you can see here, in the four years of the project thus far, I don't know how that happened, but we're in quarter three of year four of a five-year grant. And as you can see, despite COVID, despite school going remote and everything in between, Burghardt has been able to make amazing progress in all of these areas. Um, I know that Mrs. Adams and her team are working hard to making sure that we have a universal systematic screening process and that the screening, referral, access to service process with our partners such as Say Yes and Best Self and the mobile counseling clinic remain seamless, so that there are no, um, barriers to service that we cannot succumb, that we cannot make sure that we minimize so that all students who need it can obtain access to service. Next slide, please. It's important to note that Project Aware is not only for students that have, um, severe emotional disturbance and for parents that have serious mental illness, but when we talk about Project Aware, we're really talking about a multi-tiered system of support. And I know I'm preaching to the choir, because you all are probably well aware of triangles like these. Uh, you implement PBIS, Response to Intervention, right? The idea being that the triangle accounts for 100% of students, but that our tier one, uh, for example, with our student support teams, that our programming impacts about 80% of students. From there, about 15% of students may come to need additional small group supports, and this might be check-in, check-out, uh, something that Burghardt has and does very well. And about 5% of students may come to need additional supports in terms of individual counseling, which Burghardt has through its social worker, through Project Aware, as well as through CBOs such as Best Self and Say Yes. Uh, so it's, it's important to note that Project Aware is about systems, the multi-tiered system of support, as well as practices. Uh, what we do to be able to support students who need services at one tier or another. And you can kind of see, you know, if you think back to the beginning of my comments, you know, one in five people have mental health needs. Uh, so if we combine tiers two and three, that's our 20%. Um, and if our numbers are larger than that, that suggests typically that we need to go back and relook at, well, what are we offering at tier one for all students? This is our wellness center. Um, this is really making sure that students have a proactive way to address their needs as well as the actions of teachers. Thank you. Next slide, please. And what I'd like to offer here is that mental health, as you know, not only impacts students' academics, right? Everything from outcomes related to school achievement, to graduation rates, um, to being able to hold down, um, jobs as a working adult, but also what we're seeing in the literature is that for students, having a relationship with a respected adult, just one, and I say just, right, but it's an important one. Just one adult, uh, can really help students to mitigate the, and come out of the circumstances related to any mental health challenge that they're having. But again, mental health is a continuum. We need to work with students who, um, one day maybe will and one day maybe struggling. Because honestly, again, we all have mental health. And so being able to have a way to, uh, be proactive and respond to all of that also helps us in terms of a school climate standpoint. Next slide, please. At this point, I'd like to turn things over to Mrs. Arlene Adams, who is the Community Project Manager for Project Aware in Buffalo Public Schools at Burghardt. Arlene?
Thank you so much. When I came into this position, um, these were the goals that were set before us. It was training, increase in screening, referral and connection to services, parent, family and community engagement, and sustainability, what stays when this project is over. Um, I also walked into this mission statement that was developed by the Advisory Council. And so the question then became, how do we actually turn, uh, what's written on paper into something that's, uh, in fruition in the school building? So after spending some time with building administration, faculty and staff, students, parents, um, community partners that were in the building, my team and I came up with, uh, this wonderful plan. Um, next slide, please. So in real time, I'll walk you through and show you what this looks like at Burghardt High School. We have 80% of the faculty and staff that's trained in mental health first aid. If someone falls down and has a heart attack, our immediate response is to call 911, call the ambulance, we alert building administration. There's a policy, there's a procedure. But there was no policy or procedure for what happens when someone is in a mental health crisis. How do we respond? What do we say? What do we do? And so mental health first aid is a preliminary step in that. Beyond the faculty and staff at Burghardt being trained, last year, last June, we were a part of a training for trainers with the National Council for Mental Health Wellbeing. So we have thirteen district employees and one parent who were trained and now are trainers within the district. So our community partners, our parents and our faculty and staff can continue to get this training for years to come. They koalified us. If you look at the picture, the koala bear was their mascot. And so we are all koalified trainers in mental health first aid. That's a gift that we'll keep on giving long after the project ends. We also had our student youth ambassadors that are a part of the Inter-High Student Council actually took mental health 101 teens so that peer-to-peer, which is normally how we hear of certain mental health crises, that they know how to respond to their peers as well. I thank you so much. Last year, we were on the news. We came before you last May during Mental Health Awareness Fund. And the board, through the American Rescue Fund, gave us funding to purchase six thousand seven hundred and eighty-four kits. And we currently have that invoice set. And so I thank you for that because that means that our district can start to get trained. I think that mental health first aid is just as important to the district as sexual harassment training is. Next slide, please. So for our wellness center, initially, when we came up with this plan, it was to have a prevention room, a mindfulness room, is what was requested of us. And opposite of ISS, we pulled some students out of there and asked them, if you had a room that was opposite of this room, what would that room look like? And that room became our prevention room. It was designed by the students, the students put it together, the students named it. So you will see what that looks like. We have a parent center that models the district parent centers. When our parents come in, they're able to go in there to fill out forms during community Saturdays. Workshops are held in there for parents. Anything, any parent needs, they come and that center is available for them. The community partner suite, a lot of times when CBOs or community partners come in the building, there's no designated space for them, there's no system of how they get their students. And so we've been able to do that so that our community partners have a designated approved private space to be able to do that. And the last thing, the teacher's corner, is an addition that was not initially our intention. However, at the beginning of the school year, we lost, I lost a colleague from McKinley and another colleague that worked at Burghardt High School. They both died by suicide and it caught me off guard, but it helped me to remember that sometimes teachers need a moment too, right? We expect them to show up every day to perform, but sometimes personally, they have things going on and that their mental health and well-being is just as important. So I will show you what these rooms look like. Next slide, please. This is our mindfulness prevention room. The students have affectionately named it the comfort zone. It was student-inspired, the students designed it, the students named it. And that is their safe space, that is their space to go to. We use the suggestions of our Advisory Council if it is a part of their treatment plan, if the student has lost a loved one and needs time to gather themselves. If there are any social academic intervention groups that are taking place with our SST or our community partners, that space is available to them. We just concluded Ramadan, the students were able to use this space to pray. So it is a multipurpose, multifunctional space courtesy of Project Aware. We are very, very proud of this space and excited for what's to come with it. Next slide, please. This is our parent center. This is what it looks like. Yeah, that's the parent center center. So again, parent workshops take place in there, stuffs in there, kids need to help forms. We have our community resource leader, Toya Carr. Sometimes, you know, we need parent consent when the students are about to receive services. Sometimes we get that consent easily and sometimes we don't. And we really have to spend quality time with parents on letting them understand what the services are and the importance of the services. So that space is designated for them. Next slide, please. This is our community partner suite. Again, when our community partners come in, this is a designated space just for them. It's located on the first floor. It's a very private space, so students were a little skeptical of going to counseling, say, on the third floor where all their peers could see, things of that nature. But we have scheduled times. So for instance, Best Self is in there on Mondays and the mobile clinic is in there on Wednesdays. And the Prevention Council is in there on Fridays. So we actually schedule out the spaces so the community partners don't overlap, but there's always a space for them. They come in, they're introduced to the students, they're introduced to the parents. And it makes their job a lot easier because it is a seamless system based off of the district model, RFA process that our school psychologist holds the data for. And it's been a really smooth process by using that for the community partners. There's a lot of them. Next slide, please. So these are our community partners that we currently work with. Some of them were in existence when we got to Burghardt, a lot of them were not. They were added as student need came about. We have a lot of students whose parents were incarcerated and, you know, they wanted to see them, spend time with them, queue in the Osborne Association. We have, based off the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, a lot of students who were dealing with substance abuse issues comes in the Prevention Council. Students who didn't have access to Medicaid, the family's Medicaid had expired, things like that. We have Univera, we have Fidelis. So these community partners really help us to be able to connect our students to services or are the actual partners that are servicing the students. And based on the RFAs, we're able to designate what best suits the students so that we can avoid duplicating a lot of services and that we can reach a larger group of students. Next slide, please. And this is our teacher's corner. "You Can't Pour From An Empty Cup" is the theme of this little corner. And it has a little coffee station, a couch and a nice little designated area for the teachers that's on the third floor. And again, it's definitely in memoriam for the colleagues that we have lost who died by suicide. Next slide, please. We also have community events that are a part of our grant. On Friday, we had our Second Annual Mental Health Awareness Day. Last year, we had Dr. Sawyer speak. This year, the faculty and staff all got a copy of this book, Stay Woke. And it's supposed to be a way of, I don't know, I don't even know how to explain it, but it is a way for meditation for all. Language that fits urban education on how to meditate because it's not something that we grew up with. And so this author actually came to Buffalo on Friday and did a live practice with our students on some of these practices. And it was phenomenal, his engagement with the students. It was a recorded event, so if you did not catch it, we will put it on the Burghardt page. And while he was there, he actually had us to close our eyes and to take a deep breath. And he asked us to imagine what it would look like, what our ideal world would look like and the energy that we would need to make that happen. And so ideally, if I could make something happen in Buffalo Public Schools world, it would be that the things that we've learned from Project Aware are implemented in every school. And so we had a faculty and staff basketball tournament and other activities. And so this is something, again, that will sustain long beyond us with the health and wellness team. Next slide, please. And this is just a picture of our back-to-school drive. We also participate in all community Saturdays. We are a part of all committees, anything that is happening in the building, Project Aware is a part of. But it was just another way to kind of ease the financial stress and burden on our parents and families by having the bookbag supplies for our students a couple of years in a row. Next slide. I'm actually going to turn this portion over to the other New York State Ed rep, Princella Leary.
Hi, thank you, Arlene. And I'm excited to present to the board. And it's just a short slide, but the word means so much. So when we started this project, we've always started with sustainability in mind. And so there were four key factors that we needed to make sure that systems and programs and practices, some of them we could sustain without funding and some we would need funding for. We're in, as Laura said, we're in our fourth year of a five-year program. And training is key to sustaining everything that you guys have put together so far. And when you train your students on being able to identify maybe some of their peers who needs help and they know to go and tell an adult, that's huge. And then when you include parents, this is a practice that will go on forever. And partnerships is key to this endeavor. We have partners who can provide resources. They can provide opportunities to get access to other funding sources. And they can also share best practices across states and across the nation, actually. Your school has a lot of partners and they've done a lot for your students. As Arlene mentioned, there was a partner who identified students who needed insurance. And so you brought in a partner to provide medical insurance for that student. And these things are going on seamlessly so that your teachers can teach. And so this is, it's an amazing program. So given that, I said there was four things that you needed to make this sustainable. And so the fourth one is, Arlene, you know, you need that person to hook everything together. You need them to make those connections to make sure practices and policies are implemented and that teachers and students and parents know what's going on. And she's done that amazingly. I also wanted to let you know that there are other possible funding sources after year five, which ends September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Project Aware has a no-cost extension, but that's based on funding availability. And SAMSA, we're not sure where that's going to end up. But there is an opportunity to apply for a mental health grant through OMH. And that deadline is May twenty-fifth. And with this grant, it's modeled right after the infrastructure that was set up for Project Aware. So you've already got that infrastructure in place. And with this grant, you can also get more than you received from Project Aware. And that's five hundred thousand instead of the four hundred that you received. And just be on the lookout in a year or two for other funding sources from New York State Ed. The governor just passed the budget and it had a lot of things in there in regards to mental health. But having trainings, partnerships and that person that keep those infrastructures going, it's a must with this program. And I just want to let you know that Arlene has done an excellent job doing it. Thank you.
So.
Continue, please.
I would like to commend Principal Watson, Arlene Adams and the Project Aware and Burghardt team for a remarkable job over the past few years working to best support the mental health needs, not just the students, but their families and our BPS staff. As indicated, their work has already been used as a model to continue to support mental health, but also overall wellness needs to ensure that we support the whole child. Thank you to Dr. Williams and the Board of Education for your continued support. I'd like to close tonight's presentation with a poem that really resonates with the work of Project Aware and the Department of Social Emotional Wellness Supports. The poem was written by Mickey Bay Scott Jones and it is titled "An Invitation To Brave Space." Together, we will create brave space because there's no such thing as a safe space. We exist in the real world, we all carry scars and we have all caused wounds. In this space, we seek to turn down the volume of the outside world. We amplify voices that fight to be heard elsewhere. We call each other to more truth and love. We have the right to start somewhere and continue to grow. We have the responsibility to examine what we think we know. We will not be perfect, this space will not be perfect. It will not always be what we wish it to be, but it will be our brave space together and we will work on it side by side. So again, thank you to Principal Watson, Arlene Adams. It's been my pleasure to oversee the grant as grant manager, as Director of the Department of Social Emotional Wellness Supports. And as Princilla said, we are applying for those additional funding opportunities so we can scale up the work through the support of the Board of Education. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Did that conclude the presentation? Yes, yes. Thank you for such an alighting illustration of our program. I know it's much deeper than what these several pages said on the slideshow. And I know all the work that you do with each individual student goes very much appreciated. And we must make sure that this program continues on even if it's not with Aware that we get other sources of funding for this program here at Burghardt so we continue on working, you know, for the social and emotional welfare of our children. I know this is one of Sharon Bell and Cotton's schools, so I'm going to let her go first with the questions and we proceed from there.
Thank you. I want to say kudos. It's been a, you guys have come a long way from the initial planning meetings when the mission was pulled together and I'm very proud of the work that you're doing. I always appreciate the dedication that Principal Watkins brings to our staff. And I was sure that she was going to select the right people to be a part of this because that's just who she is, okay? And if you weren't, you wouldn't be sitting here. So I appreciate each one of you as well. I do have a couple of questions because we're talking about sustainability. And one of the things that came to my mind was, and you listed it on there, that you have youth ambassadors. And I was wondering if you have a schedule of how many you are planning to bring on? I'm assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the sixty-seven hundred kits tie into that some way or another or not? I was a little confused about that. But I do know that other schools are doing the ambassador, mental health ambassador piece. And I just wanted to make sure that Burghardt as well as, well, I have three schools that are doing it right now, so I'm pleased with that. But I just wanted to know, are you planning on rolling out more ambassadors? The other piece is that I came up with, or question I had is, how do you find out about students? Do you have an anonymous way of students referring students to you so that their identities are protected as well? Those are my two questions. And the third one is, is our grant department helping you with this grant as we move forward and the deadline is less than fourteen days away?
So for the first question, the students who are part of the Inter-High Student Council, currently there's five of them that actually read the book and did the Mental Health Team 101. And so they go forth as our initial ambassadors. We also have students who serve on the tier-one team. There are certain students that actually sit, who receive services, who sit on the Project Aware Advisory Council as well. So our students are really like integral in our process. And this was the first year that they did this involvement. And so, yes, we hope to grow and continue that. The second question, we use the district RFA process because data is key. When it comes to Project Aware, I meet with these lovely ladies from the state in OMH every Tuesday and Thursday and I report numbers on every Wednesday. So the data is really key. We use the district RFA system so that our school psychologist keeps record of all of that because we report how many students were referred and what service they were connected with. So we monitor that very closely. What we have found, I don't know if this is post-COVID behavior because Ms. Watson previously was like, these kids are just not going to talk to people that they don't know. But I believe the two years where they were home and they did not have outreach, they have no problem coming and saying, "I need counseling." They go beyond one and they shoot straight to three. And when they share their stories, they are completely accurate. And when they share their stories, they are completely accurate. They, they definitely need tier-three services. And so sometimes that process is, is expedited. Depending on the student, again, it could be weekly services that comes in from one of our community partners. Or if we find that the students need additional support in the building, then the Project Aware social worker that is in the building or one of the other school social workers are connected with that student as well to provide additional support. Sometimes it is the community-based partners that come in. Sometimes they are assigned a mentor. So each student comes in with unique needs. I think at a place like Bergard, and what we always have to remember is the manifestation of our students' traumas may look differently. It may look like fighting. It may look like cursing each other out. It may look like swearing. It may look like sleeping in class. But there's a, there's an underlying reason why. And so, you know, with our team and with all the community-based support, with the school-based staff, that's, that's our portion is to figure out the whys. So the students have been very vocal in the services. We get RFAs obviously from teachers. Sometimes building administration is made aware of a situation. And then we connect the students to services. But it's all very much streamlined through that process. And for the grant question, I will leave that to Mai.
Yeah, so we've been working on the grant that's due May 25th for the past couple of weeks. And I've been working pretty much every day with the grants department to make sure that we're on pace and we'll meet that deadline.
Okay, thank you. And so you normally have an annual event. Were you, did you have that already?
Yes, it was on Friday.
Oh, that was your annual event. I don't think I got an invitation this year, Charlene Watson, principal.
My apologies.
It's okay. It was a beautiful event in the past and certainly our children deserve it. One final question. Have you guys embraced our data from the Youth Behavior Risk Survey for your school?
Oh, absolutely. So that really guides, again, a lot of those social academic intervention groups that we hold. Between, between the Youth Risk Behavior Survey and the student voice themselves is really where we kind of derive our programming from. But when we look at the high risk factors from Bergard High School, that's how we know how to address it.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to make sure that we are addressing the adults, including not just the teachers, but the parents of the children. And I hope, my initial hope with this initiative was that the stigma that was associated with mental health is being erased. And I, I, I believe it is happening under, under your watch. And I appreciate each and every one of you for the phenomenal job that you're doing. Thank you.
Just to add to Mrs. Cotton, oftentimes our parents will call the school and ask for support for their child or the family. So the parents are always involved in, and I always make sure we contact the parents so that they know what's going on with their child and at school. So even if they don't know that RFA was sent to Project Aware, they'll know once the adult starts working with the child what's going on and they can get involved.
Yeah, and we've actually, we've actually found parents who are requesting help, which was, again, not something that we were prepared for initially. And then we also have students who are dealing with parents who suffer from mental illness. So how do we help support them as well? So those were additional conversations that we had to add to our programming because it was unexpected, but we, we have to address the need as it presents itself.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next we go with Paulette Woods. Do you have any questions or concerns?
I just want to say that given the situations with COVID, this program is a wonderful program. It's, it's definitely needed. I'm just sitting here amazed and, and thinking about, you know, I worked with the detention center and so many of our children had psychotropic drugs, emotional abuse. They were there because the family was broken. And that's what's coming into our schools. So I just applaud you for recognizing our children need this help and having a plan to deliver it. I, I think it's something that should be duplicated in other schools. It's, it's just needed. Our, our children are facing trauma. And yes, there's quite a few people committing suicide. So thank you for what you do.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Woods. And last, we have Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown.
I concur with my colleagues. From my own experience, I think that what you're doing is so critical in your building as well as in other school buildings in our district. What I found is that, you know, Ms. Adams, you mentioned that young people come and say they need counseling or whatever. They do that because you're the driver of that program. And a lot of times when young people see that the driver of that program and the staff, the principal are meaningful and very intentional, you're not going to have a problem with recruiting them to provide the service. Because they know they're in good hands, the parents know they're in good hands, and they're going to continue to get the services. Otherwise, they would not have had it. So just saying, from my experience, that's how young people function. And you're doing a good job and you're saving lives of these young people. So kudos to you and continue your work.
Thank you. And that is very true. And I say that it's, it's very contagious because my office was almost the mindfulness room before the mindfulness room was in existence. And I think like one tells the other, tells the other, go see her. And there's just a beautiful school support staff that is on standby at all times because I always have to remind them, I am not a counselor. And so they are there and they are readily available to, to address the students' needs. But yes, they, they definitely do. They share the word amongst each other. And again, I'm just blown away by their willingness to say, you know what? I actually need help.
Thank you. Thank you. And last, I just have a couple of questions. But I'd like to say congratulations on the work that you're doing over at Bergard. I know it's been, been a huge turnaround over there. And I know that that school faces more challenges than other schools in our district face. And that with the population that you have and the number of incidents that came out in the past that you, you ladies are doing such a wonderful job there at Bergard. And, and I just want to make sure that we keep in place that even when this grant runs out, that we keep our people in place as a project administrators and with mental health as we move forward. So as we apply for another grant or receive another grant, that, that we keep this work in place and just don't let it go away. So it's been four years, four and a half years of, of work into this. And I think that the input that you have is detrimental, not only to the children, but to the teachers and the parents and, and this community. So that, that goes into my question. For our teachers, who's keeping the data on this? I know that it doesn't come to the board or, or shouldn't come to the board. But when you go to, we find somebody that may be at tier three and you missed tier one and tier two in the process of the mental health and counseling and the social emotional awareness of what they may be going through, what are we doing at tier three when we find individuals that's, that's at high risk?
Right, so like the mindfulness room is a tier one. That's a tier one intervention. It's a, it's a room that's available for all, a safe space available for all. Tier two is where we get into what we need for, right? So maybe mentoring, maybe they're in a staff group, they're on check-in, check-out, things of that nature. When we get to tier three, which Laura showed that triangle, we get to tier three. That's the meat and potatoes of what Project Aware does. That's that referral, access and connection to services piece. And that's where Best Self comes in. We have mobile counseling. We have the Prevention Council for students who are struggling with substance abuse. So those are where those community partnerships come in, is for those tier-three students. So for the majority of students, we move them through those tier-one services. For the few, we have the tier-two interventions in place. And for tier three, that's the meat and potatoes of when we're ready with the heavy stuff. And again, the, the manifestation of their traumas, you know, Principal Watson and I met with a young lady today who courageously admitted the coping strategies that she learned when she was a little girl no longer apply now that she's 17, 18 years old. And so to, to be able to reconnect her with services because it's a different need at a different time. So, you know, we have those tier-three interventions ready and in place. And again, that's the process that runs very smooth using the district RFA process. We didn't invent anything different. We use the model that the district already had set for.
Let me rephrase the questions a little bit. I, I really appreciate your answer. We have most of these, these organizations that you partner with, you know, are working with the district already. And we know that we have these services and they can be applied in strenuous-type situations or to someone who's just may have questions or concerns. But what I want to target is those severe cases. I don't want to hear about a teacher who's, who's at, you know, at a, at, at a point they don't want to, they feel they can't turn around in their life or, or a staff member, you know, that may be exhibiting, you know, mental health behavior issues. And that, but we missed all of the previous signs. How are we keeping a record of those individuals and what are we doing for them? Is that specifically going over to the mental health agencies? Or does the district have a way of reaching out to these individuals and working with them?
I think that question would be better suited for Tammy, right? I know that we have the employee assistance program. I know that the staff are entitled to three emergency counseling sessions. But beyond that, you know, we would not have any, any faculty and staff data.
Okay, I believe that's tier-three programming. But yes, okay, thank you. I'll reach out with the superintendent and staff at a later date to see if we, what's happening with those individuals. But when you say that we have coworkers that may, you know, have suicidal tendencies or, or have committed suicide, you know, that's alarming. And see that every day, you know, they're working with our children also. And we just want to make sure we have a balance here where we can work with one another.
Correct. It is alarming. I think that, again, that would be best for human resources to figure that portion out. You know, again, he was inspired, you know, he was a colleague at McKinley. The other teacher, she actually worked at Bergard High School when I was there previously. So it was inspired by them, but past that, we wouldn't have any data on faculty and staff.
To help answer that question, Mr. Hurd, during the pandemic, I worked with Andrea Sanders with Special Ed as a cross collaborator, cross collaboration team to launch the collective care cafes. And the collective care cafes created a space for BPS employees to come together to connect to, as Ms. Adams said earlier, refill their cups. So the quote that we use is that you can't pour from an empty cup. And so we wanted to create that space for staff to come together. It was done virtually because we were in the middle of the pandemic. And since the school year started, we've been taking our collective care cafes on the go. An example would be just this week, we have worked with Principal Potter at Middle Early College. And he has allocated time for his staff to work with our department for collective care cafe where we focus on the well-being of the staff. Now that collective care cafe has now evolved and now we work with Dana Floriano from Benefits to, you know, make sure staff are aware of the resources that they have at their disposal. But then we want to kind of relaunch the WIS subcommittee of employee wellness that will help to kind of bring that together. So while our schools at tier three focus on the students, we know that we also have to support the staff too. We might not be able to offer them direct services, but we can link them up and create that brave space that I talked about earlier to build those relationships so that our staff are refilling their cups so that they can give their best to our students.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I only asked that because I heard earlier you said that you work with staff members also. So I just wanted to see, you know, what type of assist can you give to staff members and direction that that goes. But I have understanding of that. I just wanted to see how a program like this can also, you know, capture those because I'm sure board members have a lot of phone calls from staff members who felt overwhelmed throughout COVID and the teaching process, learning how to do virtual education and also, you know, dealing with the hardships themselves. So I know it's been a troubled time for more than just our students. I know for the board itself, you know, it's been troubling for us and administrators putting this puzzle together to figure out, you know, how to get normalcy back. And I'd just like to thank you for working through this, this time with this program. I see it was much needed. It must have been foreseen before it came. But it, it's, it's really been, been a great credit, you know. We should model the rest of our schools as such.
Yes, and I will say, you know, at Bergard, for instance, last week, you know, we did have a faculty and staff luncheon and there was a restorative circle. Next week, we have faculty and staff yoga. And on the 25th, we have faculty and staff massages. Those are things that Project Aware can support, the mental health and wellness piece. But again, faculty and staff, we reserve to HR.
Thank you, thank you. So are there any more questions or?
I have one question, Mr. Hurd, to the, for the superintendent. Madam Superintendent, is it possible that children who take the training or read the book and become ambassadors, mental health ambassadors, can receive a community credit for doing such? I think that would be a good incentive for our young people. And I think it may go a long way in helping them in the future. But that's just an idea that I would like to see if we could implement across the district because we do have quite a few children, students being trained at this point or, or going to be trained to be mental health ambassadors. Just an idea.
I think that is an excellent, excellent idea. And so I'll work with staff to see how that can happen. It's an excellent idea. Thank you.
So that's the end of our questions and comments. I'd like to conclude today's education support committee meeting. And our, our committee meeting is on this date of, of, what's today's date? The 11th? 11th of May. Thank you, thank you once again, everybody, for your presentation. It was a, it was a well, well-thought-out presentation. And, and I know that those few slides can't particularly show all the work that you guys have been doing, probably not for one half a day. But, but thank you for the work that you're doing at school with our children. And I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Have a good evening. I think we're.
Are we done, Terrence? We're dismissed?
We are dismissed. We have concluded. Everybody have a wonderful, wonderful week.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, good job.
Good night, be safe.
Go get some sun. Everybody got a suntan but you?
Right, good night.
Good night.